It said two minutes, three minutes after four. Can I ask everyone to stand for the pledge? Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The principals sounded quiet during the pledge. Spanish translation. We don't have a translator here.
Could you please introduce yourself as our Spanish translator today?
My name is Cynthia White. Me llamo Cynthia White. Si alguien necesita traducciones esta noche, favor de yo puedo sentarme al lado de esa persona. Gracias.
Thank you, Dr. White. And headsets are available for the hearing impaired. We have no members of the public with us currently, so I assume there's no public comment as well. That would be quite surprising, wouldn't it? So we have two items on our action agenda. Item B1 is the second reading of the re opener tentative agreement between the Santa Barbara Teachers, between Santa Barbara School Districts and the Santa Barbara Teachers Association. Dr. Robertson?
And Dr. Robertson will give this presentation.
Thank you very much for accommodating me being able to come back to this particular board meeting with the second reading for the re opener. As you know, we brought this before you on October 23rd for a first reading, and due to the calendar, SPTA did not ratify the entire tentative agreement. On November 6th, SPTA requested that the calendar be pulled from the tentative agreement package and be negotiated as a separate item. After checking with legal counsel, it was noted that we could do so and bring it back. At this point, with your approval, a November 30th deadline has been established for SPTA to still submit a proposed calendar for the board's consideration with ongoing negotiations to be in place until an agreement is come to. So at this point, I've attached a revised copy of the tentative agreement minus the calendar for a second reading, and the items still attached would include the health welfare benefits cap of $375, the rights and obligations, the district will fund 40%, including benefits for the Santa Barbara Teachers Association president, and that's linked to the calendar decision language will be made prior to August 31st, one year prior to implementation. The fiscal impact of health welfare benefit is there, approximately $267,750, with the president increase being $17,985. It is recommended that the board take action and approve the revised 2007-2008 second reading re opener.
Any questions from board members? Nope. Looked at it a number of times. Is there a motion?
Move to approve?
Second. Thanks. So a motion by Ms. Cordero, second by Ms. Malikoff. All those in favor of approving the re opener tentative agreement between the school districts and SPTA signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So it passes five zero. So now we are on to the main order of the day, presentation and approval of the single plans for student achievement by the high schools.
Well, this afternoon is continuation of our single plan presentation. We have the high school principals presenting this afternoon, and Friday, not this next Friday, but the following Friday, we'll have the 30th, we'll have the junior high principals presenting. I'd like to remind both the presenters and the board that these are the single plans for student achievement. It's not the broad array of all the activities going on at a school. The single plans are designed specifically to address categorical and categorically funded programs. Those are the programs that are above and beyond the core programs at each school, and most of the categorical programs target students with some sort of a special need, whether it's students who are underachieving or students who are English learners, and those are our primary groups. So we're going to focus on what our plans are for reaching those students, and board members, you know the routine. I'd like to introduce first Paul Turnbull, who is our Assistant Superintendent for Secondary Education, and he will in turn introduce the principals.
Thank you, Dr. Sarvis. As Dr. Sarvis mentioned, this is the plan for student achievement. This would be your third round, I would suppose, entering the secondary district now. We are focused predominantly throughout the secondary schools on three initiatives that were started last year, both within and without the secondary district, including elementary. We have ELD in particular because we have an ongoing issue and focus on our English language learners. Avid, of course, is continuing on, and the second full year of professional learning communities, PLCs. It's important to note that all the plans have been aligned with the LEAP, and that a special note of appreciation and thanks should go to Dr. Cynthia White, who worked very closely with the principals to make sure that the SMART goals within the plans were SMART and that they actually were aligned with the LEAP. So thank you to her, and thank you to all the principals. Beyond that, I would also remind you that we have the same issues with timeliness in budget and data that the elementary district has. We're working on those things, but we understand our limitations and essentially reality as well. So I think that the principals are going to give a lot of information based on the timeliness that they were under. So with that, Mrs. Abney and LaCuesta.
Good evening. LaCuesta High School and Community Day School, demographic information, we currently enroll approximately 245 students. The average percentage of English learners across all of the programs is 23%, 16 teachers and two counselors. LaCuesta High School is umbrella for a number of at-risk programs, and I'll just give you a quick rundown. We have continuation high schools located on the Santa Barbara, San Marcos, and Dos Pueblos high school campuses, in addition to one located on the La Colina Junior High Campus. Each of these schools consists of two classrooms and two teachers, supported by a counselor and a principal who rotate to two campuses each day. LaCuesta also includes a community day school program, which currently enrolls seventh and eighth grade students located on the La Colina Junior High School Campus, two high school independent study teachers on the Santa Barbara High Campus, an independent study teacher on the Dos Pueblos Campus, and three high school teachers in the middle college program housed at Santa Barbara City College. Always mindful that programs for at-risk students are dropout prevention programs as well as academically focused programs, our school-wide goal has always been to increase academic achievement across the board while also helping students to gain credits towards high school graduation. For the 2007-2008 school year, using the district LEAP, the board focus goals, and the very real need to emphasize passage of the exit exam, we've refined our focus to specifically address academic goals in English and reading, English language development, and mathematics. In addition, professional development and school climate goals that support the academic goals have also been put into place. The school climate goal is an expanded version of what we've been engaged in for the last several years, as research indicates a supportive and inclusive school culture is critical to student academic success. Over the course of the last several years, students and staff at LaCuesta have engaged in the process of building a school community. This has been accomplished slowly through the use of staff development and student activities. During the 2006-2007 school year, we revised our vision to more closely reflect what we believe is a school community. The mission of LaCuesta High School is to provide each student with a diverse education in a safe, supportive environment that promotes self-discipline, motivation, and excellence in learning. The LaCuesta team joins the parents and community to support students in developing skills to become resilient, self-sufficient adults who will succeed and contribute responsibly in a global community. We believe the power of this vision reflects the work that we do on a daily basis to meet the needs of a unique, at-promised student population. In addition to community building and visioning, the continued district support of the hiring of highly qualified teachers, as defined by the No Child Left Behind Act, places LaCuesta in the position of continuing to have certificated math science and English history teachers at each site. These teachers actively participate in the professional learning community process and meet regularly to design curriculum, discuss common assessments, and create lessons that resonate with students who struggle to believe that they can be successful. As a staff, we are committed to the AVID WICER, Writing, Inquiry, Collaboration, and Reading, and that's what the acronym stands for, and interactive notebook strategies, using them across all campuses in the core classes. The majority of LaCuesta's teachers and support staff have participated in the summer AVID institutes, making the strong academic components of AVID a part of our institutional commitment. A focused belief that these students can access and be successful in college will continue to be a school-wide focus at LaCuesta. Our barriers and our challenges remain the same as they have been in previous years. Our students have often been failed by the system, and it is our job to find a way to overcome the safety, climate, and academic barriers that they have encountered to make it possible for them to be successful students and adults. It is paramount to always keep in mind that for some of these students, school is the only constant and safe place in their lives. The professional learning community model has given us the opportunity and impetus to continue to examine our practice as it has not been examined before. New staff has brought renewed energy to this process and is driving the effort to develop appropriate curriculum that addresses the standards while also addressing the needs of our particular student population. The energy and can-do attitude at LaCuesta continues to be infectious and exciting. Teachers and students alike are challenged and continue to rise to that challenge. Our students continue to achieve poorly on standardized tests, scoring basic below basic and far below basic on the English Language Arts CST, 85% or more of the time for the past three years. The results of the Algebra I test has been even worse, with students scoring proficient less than 10% of the time in the previous three years. However, in 2007, 15% of the 11th graders tested were proficient on the CST and Algebra I. There's no 10th grade score indicating a statistical insignificance. However, the good news on the exit exam, a high-stakes test that has meanings to students personally because it determines whether or not they receive a diploma at the end of their high school career, our students continue to do much better. Over time, exit exam scores have improved dramatically. That increase can be attributed to direct teacher intervention through tutorial sessions in years prior to the '06-'07 school year. And there's a chart in the back of your packet on page 32 that shows that. As a response to the increased exit exam scores and the community building that we did with students and staff, we extended the mandatory school day in '06-'07 and built the exit exam preparation period into the schedule. We added an hour to our school day in order to make that happen, and this is the second year in that process. We continue to show good passing results on the exit exam, and all graduating seniors in June 2007 passed the exit exam. There are two students on stage that didn't have results, and one passed the May exam and another one passed the July exam, so we were pretty excited about that. In addition to the testing piece in the exit exam, alternative schools in California also report results on the Alternative Schools Accountability Model, or the ASAM. The ASAM results are found on pages 33 to 38 of the single plan document and show definite growth over time. Our efforts to increase attendance, decrease suspensions, and increase credit completion show in the commendable or sufficient ranges in virtually all cases. This is a sign that students and staff are successfully reaching the goals that we set for student achievement in areas of behavior and performance that directly affect positive outcomes for academic achievement. We've set SMART goals in English language development, mathematics, reading language arts, school climate, and professional development. Academic goals are based specifically on the district LEAP and the board focus goals. Professional learning communities continue to work to identify essential standards, develop benchmark exams, examine data, monitor student work, create and use common rubrics, and use a common credit and grading system. Student work is evaluated at each six-week grading period. Members of the professional learning communities are responsible for monitoring the progress of each of the academic goals. We're using the professional learning community process and AVID strategies to create a learning environment that works with this at-risk population. Traditional strategies have not been successful with the majority of our students. As a result, teachers are creating benchmark exams that measure actual learning in addition to gathering student work over time in portfolios that showcase student growth in the core subject areas. Students leaving LaCuesta and Community Day School need to be able to succeed at the next level, wherever that might be, and the strategies that are being used to help students succeed are designed to work at the next level, and that would be college, high school, work, wherever they happen to be going. The school climate goals involve outside agencies, field trips, college visits, and student leadership. Student and staff feedback will be used to evaluate the effectiveness of the various activities. In addition to purely academic field trips, local trips of interest are being planned as an incentive to reward those students with excellent attendance and focused academic production. Our professional development plan is built in as one of our school-wide goals. It includes time for teachers to work together to create and develop curriculum as members of collaborative teams. It also includes the use of subject-specific and professional conferences and outside facilitators to assist teachers in creating and delivering standards-based curriculum in the most effective manner to this at-risk population. For the second year, LaCuesta took a team to the AVID Summer Institute in July. The strategies that the teachers brought back from that experience are being used across all sites on a daily basis, and students are being coached and encouraged to consider college as a realistic option for their future. Independent study teachers are requiring their students to use AVID strategies by taking Cornell Notes, an excellent organizational strategy, in preparation for their weekly class meetings with, weekly class meeting sessions. All LaCuesta teachers are class-certified and highly qualified, as defined by NCLB. It is my goal as a leader to empower my teachers to be collaborators. It is critical when teachers are not credentialed in each of the core subjects they're required to teach that they have someone to collaborate with. With a professional learning community model and the six teachers hired in the last two years, we have a true team of teachers who are excited about the possibilities. They meet regularly to share and support each other, knowing that there is a colleague across town that is facing the same challenges they are, but also knowing that colleague might have a solution to a specific challenge or problem. They are continuing to create and refine curriculum that meets the needs of their very diverse population of learners while still modeling the importance of learning and offering a role model for the love of learning itself. My role as a leader is to support my staff and ensure we stay focused on our goals. If areas are identified where additional training is necessary to adequately address our goals, it's my responsibility to facilitate this training. It's also my role to be out in the classrooms on a daily basis, not only supporting staff but letting students know that I am available and approachable. Currently, I'm on two campuses a day, available to staff as a resource so that they can be effective teachers to all of their students. Site council agrees that LaCuesta's major focus has to be on student achievement while also recognizing that unless the climate is conducive to learning, nothing can be accomplished. As a result, we chose to place our resources so that they support preparation for the exit exam, support for English learners, and support across the board for students in English reading and mathematics. Site council members believe students need an opportunity to experience many of the things they might somehow miss on a traditional campus, so there are ample funds set aside for field trips to colleges and for other student activities. Lastly, the council also felt it was critical for teachers to have access to quality staff development and conferences to stay current on best practices in education. Thank you.
Thank you. Board questions? Does somebody want to start? Okay, lots of teachers. Go ahead.
I don't have anything profound or particular. I do have a couple of questions. Independent studies, can you explain their role within LaCuesta?
We have six independent study teachers, three in the middle college program, and that's a college prep program essentially where the students have to pass the assessment exams up at City College, and then they meet with a teacher, a LaCuesta teacher up on the campus, one hour a week.
They take regular City College classes?
They take regular City College classes, and then they also do high school curriculum with independent study teachers on the campus. The other three independent study teachers deliver a high school curriculum. We actually revamped that last year also, so the students don't just come an hour a week. We do a five, four-hour-a-week study hall. So they have a one-on-one meeting with the teacher, one hour a week, and then four hours a week they come for a study hall, they have access to computers if they have questions they need to have answered, but it's for students that are either parenting. We have some professional athletes. We have some students that are, occasionally we have kids that return with a band, they're working full-time to support a family, so we really try to look at students that can't be in a classroom on a full-time basis, not just because they don't want to go to school, although occasionally we will get a student that a doctor medically says just can't be in school full-time but wants to stay kind of connected. But independent study is basically, they do most of the work at home on their own.
I'm interested in the school climate. Could you talk just a little bit more about?
It's, school climate, LaCuesta-
What is it now and what is it you're trying to make it into?
Well, I could tell you what it was seven years ago and what it is now and what I'd like it to make it into.
Okay, so we got three data points.
Right, exactly.
Seven years ago, now, and the future.
Yeah, seven years ago, we were very fractured and very disjointed. Each of the campuses pretty much was an entity unto itself. I happen to be, my background ideally would be as a student activity director. I, you know, I'm a firm believer in creating opportunities for students to have a positive school experience, and I have the same feeling about staff, having an opportunity to have a team to work with. It's really, it's hard to have a collaborative staff at LaCuesta because we're located in so many different places, and so two teachers at DP, two at San Marcos, et cetera, et cetera. So we're really trying as a staff to come together and do common activities, common, you know, some social things. The same thing with students. We try to bring students together across sites. We bring a couple of sites together for a field trip to try to create some of those kinds of things that you would have on a regular campus where there's a staff workroom, teachers can get together and, you know, chat about a student or, you know, what are your plans for the weekend, those types of things. So where we went from completely autonomous campuses that really acted as if they were completely separate to now we've got a pretty unified staff and a group of people who really like working together and like planning lessons together and like working together, and ideally at some point in time, I'd like to have us all in the same place and create that school where everybody was-
How often do they meet?
We meet formally, once a month, staff meetings, and formally, once a month, professional learning communities, but I find the professional learning communities meeting informally at least one or two other times a month.
I'm a little confused. What's the difference between staff and professional learning communities?
Professional learning communities is where they get together and they work very strictly on curriculum-based things. They work on-
Same membership?
Same membership. The staff meeting is everybody, and the professional learning communities, it's the English history team and it's the math science team.
By discipline.
By discipline, yes. And I find-
Do you do anything like online communities?
We do not, although we do a lot of email communication, but we don't have a formal online community, no, but we do a lot of our communication by email. I try to do a lot of the administrative via email so that our staff meetings can be focused and, you know, and we can use it for, you know, staff development in our staff meetings.
Maybe I'll look into online collaboration.
Okay, I'll talk to you about that. You can tell me how to do that.
That's good stuff.
All right.
Well, I'll give you a couple of words.
Okay, great. I love that.
So really, our job, and I don't mean to say this in any kind of confrontational way, but our job is to put you out of business.
Absolutely.
So that's something we'll be taking up with the other three principals.
Help me create a better mousetrap. No, you know what? I firmly believe that, you know, when you have a system where you have compulsory education, the same cookie cutter doesn't fit for everybody, so you need alternatives for, you know, there are those kids that don't fit into the model that works for everybody else, so you're always going to need an alternative of some sort. And that doesn't mean that the regular system is failing the other kids. It just means that it's not working for those kids because, you know, people that work graveyard shifts are those that thrive working those kinds of hours, and there's no way I could work those kind of hours, but I think that you always need an alternative.
I want you to know that as a 17-year-old, I worked both graveyard shift and was in continuation school.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Go ahead.
Okay, because I was going to follow on the community. It's not just the teachers, but you've also formed a community among the students.
Absolutely.
Maybe you want to talk about that a little bit?
We're working, we're working across the campuses. We've brought students together in a leadership group, and we try to do that at least once a month, where three or four students from each campus get together for an hour and talk about, you know, things that are going on in their campuses. They talk about community service opportunities and they, you know, they carry the messages back and forth. They're sort of the, you know, the messengers back and forth from their campuses, and they discover how many commonalities they have among themselves, which is the beauty of bringing kids together from, you know, from different areas in the community, because oftentimes they don't know that about, you know, about each other. They, you know, they think that if you live in this part of town and you live in this part of town, that you don't have anything in common with each other. So that's been really nice, and it's been a real positive. We've been doing that for three years, so.
You also, you've had a lot more about doing AVID recently. Curious whether the students come in from the AVID program, whether they've gone through AVID in the high school, or is this something new for them?
For most of our students, it's something new. They're not the ones that would have been tabbed for AVID. They're, you know, the AVID kids are more the C-level students, and most of my kids aren't the C-level students. And so that's what I think is so powerful about the interactive notebooks, which is really an organizational strategy. The Cornell Notes, the WICER, you know, the writing strategies, that's power when they do go back or if they take those strategies forward to college with them. These are not the kids that, some of them, yes, but the majority of our kids are not the ones that likely would have been AVID kids, but we're hoping that when they go back, they might be AVID kids, and then they'll have, they'll have those tools when they go back, and when, you know, if they get tagged for an AVID class and/or we recommend them for an AVID class when they go back, they'll not go in cold. They'll know what a Cornell Note is, they'll know what an interactive notebook is, they'll know what the WICER strategies are. So we're hoping that from our end, not only can we give them those skills, but that we can refer them back to the high school, you know, on track to graduate and get them referred to AVID classes, because they'll know that, yes, college is a possibility, and they'll be, they'll go in with those kinds of strategies. So I think it's, you know, almost it'll be, you know, a flow from our direction more than, you know, coming towards us.
It seemed like that would be a good step in that, rather than going to the high school without that kind of support.
And my teachers are really excited about the interactive notebooks. I mean, it's really, it's helping, it's really helping the teachers from a grading standpoint because the kid's stuff is all there when they go to grade it. It's all there, it's organized, they put it in the notebooks at the end of every day, and they can see what the kids are missing. I mean, it's really, it's proving to be, I mean, it's a win-win all the way around, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You get pupil retention block grant money-
Yes.
-out of AB-25, which comes to the district as a lump sum, but you don't get any other money from AB-25, like the others get, sort of library money and so on and so forth?
Right.
You just get a block grant like that?
I have a library.
I know. That was my question for you. So libraries, do you have designated-
We have in-class libraries.
You do? Do you use the libraries of the sites that you're at?
No.
You have, you don't?
No.
Okay.
We won't go there.
All right, well, that's interesting to me. It's really a shame. In your barriers, school district and community barriers to improvements in student achievement, one of the barriers you list is that it was initially established as a dropout prevention program.
Essentially, that's what continuation programs are. Continuation was initially established in 1919 in the state of California, and it was established as a dropout prevention program. The idea was to keep kids connected to school, and back in those days, kids were having to go off to go to work to support families, and so if you could keep them connected, even by a thin thread, to school, you know, you could keep them from dropping out, they'd stay connected to school, and maybe they'd keep working at it. I mean, my favorite story is the 21-year-old when I was in carpentry that I graduated, and Billy would work his semester and drop out of school, work his semester, and then he'd come back and go to school full-time a semester, and then he'd drop out and he'd work his semester, and we finally graduated him at 21. He was that determined to get his high school diploma, but there are those kids that just, you know, they're emancipated and they have to work, and so continuation programs are dropout prevention programs, or credit recovery programs, or whatever you want to call them, but it is, you know-
But do you see it as a barrier? Do you think there's a perception issue?
Because it's seen as a negative. Yeah. In that sense, because continuation programs are seen as a negative. So a barrier only in that sense. I don't particularly see it as a negative, but I think, I think our programs are awesome, but I'm supposed to, right?
Go ahead, Ms. Cordero.
Can I just, Mrs. Parker's question reminds me of something that I marked and didn't ask you. You mentioned the open entry and exit policy as a barrier. But then you mentioned it in some other contexts that make it sound like that's just intrinsic to the nature of the- Yeah, but then you mentioned it in some other contexts that make it sound like that's just intrinsic to the nature of the school.
It is, but it, it is a barrier in the sense that kids, kids come and go and, and they're not always well-served by, by that kind of a situation. And it's often not in their control. Kids are involved in the juvenile justice system. Um, we enrolled a student today that came out of a court placement. And, um, you know, I don't know how many credits he got in that placement and I don't know how long he'll be with me. So the open entry, open exit in the sense that you never know how long you're going to have some of them. So in that sense, you oftentimes don't have a whole lot of time to do a lot with them. That's a downside. It, I mean, it doesn't mean that, that we're not going to take them and do absolutely our best with them, but they oftentimes don't get really going with the flow of what's happening in the classroom and then they're gone. You know, and so, um, but that's not, that's not the majority of our kids. That's a very small number. Um, but the open entry, open exit, we, we don't, we don't actually ourselves exit kids unless it's at the end of a semester. Um, and then, then they're ready to return. They've either graduated or they're ready to return to one of the traditional high schools. But occasionally the system exits them to another placement, so.
Go ahead, Ms. Cordell.
Well, that was actually going to be my question. I was wondering about the, um, not just whether it's sort of, uh, part and parcel of the, the nature of the program, but if you see it as something that we, that there is another way of structuring it that would, that could address that barrier. Because I think clearly students, as you mentioned, go in and out for a variety of reasons and a variety of times. Is there anything that you see that could help ameliorate that, the effects that that has on the students or on your ability to serve the students?
Wow, I, I hadn't even given that any thought. I mean, it's just such a natural part of, of, you know, of the, the, the nature of the beast. And again, that's not, we take students in about every three weeks. You know, we try to catch them, uh, about five, we take them for the first three weeks of a semester. Then we catch them about five weeks as, as the schools note that they're starting to fail. Then we catch them at the end of the nine-week, you know, grading period. So we kind of try to take them in, in that way from, from our traditional schools, our referring schools. And then, you know, kids moving in from out of district. You know, we do intakes every Friday, you know, trying to make sure that we get kids into school. So it's just kind of the nature of, of alternative programs that, you know, that you do have, um, kids coming in on a fairly regular flow. Occasionally, when I know a kid's going to be there short-term, um, I try to put them into maybe an independent study setting where maybe I have them come to study hall, um, every day. But then I know they're not going to actually be in a classroom setting, you know, um, kind of disturbing the, or, you know, changing the dynamics of that classroom setting where they can get some attention from the independent study teacher, but then they're working and they've got, you know, the access to the teacher. Um, I'll occasionally do that and it just often depends on the student and, and the situation. But, um, it's, it's so much a part of the nature of, of our programs that, you know, we don't give it a whole lot of thought. We just, you know, we plug them into where we think they're best served.
Well, I was wondering, is there any collaboration between La Cuesta and the other high schools once the student, if a student returns to the comprehensive high schools? Is there any way that they can maintain support from La Cuesta or any kind of, you know, i- is there any way that, that La Cuesta can, can sort of follow them a little?
Well, when the, when the students return to the, the traditional high schools, um, they're usually returning to the traditional high school from the continuation campus they were on. So I often see the support as the students coming back. I often see them coming back and visiting their teachers, their La Cuesta teachers. And in fact, particularly on the San Marcos and the DP campuses, which are, the classrooms are right there. Not as much at Santa Barbara because it's, you know, it's out on, you know, on the, on the other's end of the campus. But at DP and Santa Barbara, when I'm out on those campuses, I see kids that, you know, that left last year that are still coming back and visiting the teachers. So I think the support is the teachers who are there and just continue to encourage the kids, get to school, make sure you're doing what you need to do. And we, we occasionally, the kids get back there, just convinced that they want to go back and they get back and it's just like they're shell-shocked and they, they decide that they really didn't want to go back. And we'll re-enroll them. So, um, you know, so there's, there's that back and forth and, you know, they'll call me or they'll call their counselor or they'll let their teachers know that, you know, I just, I was sure I was ready and I really wasn't. And so, you know, we'll, we'll re-enroll them at La Cuesta. But, um, and we've got great communication with the counselors on the, on the high school campuses. So I, you know, I don't think that that's a problem, so.
And then the other question I had, thank you for that because I, I think that's an important piece, actually. Is, you talked about the test scores and I know that because of this transient population, it makes it very difficult to even compare test scores at all. I mean, more so than, it's, that's problematic in best of cases and then it's really problematic with your school. But that you mentioned the concern that the school, that the scores are, have been low. What, do you have some specific strategies that you are using to address the scores themselves?
To be honest with you, um, you're right. We've got a transient population and we have students who don't see any reason to ta- to take the CST seriously. I'll be honest with you. And I, you know, I've argued at the state level that we should make the exit exam the defining test for the high school because the kids really do take that test seriously. And figure out some way to factor out the math piece and the English piece and, you know, and judge the high schools on, and, and maybe ramp that up a little bit. I don't know. But, you know, our kids, um, they haven't had a lot of success in school anyway. And so we're trying to give them the skills that they need. And, and our goal right now is to get them proficient on the exit exam. And that would be huge. Right now, we're just, I mean, prior to this year, our goal was to get them just a passing, which is a three fifty. Our goal now for this academic year is to get them to proficient on the exit exam, which is a three eighty. And, um, you know, that's really been our focus. But I think academically, if we get them to a three eighty on the exit exam, they're going to score better on the CSTs. But they really don't see any reason to score well on the CSTs. We haven't found the carrot to make kids who aren't all that fond of school in the first place take the CST seriously because it really has no value in their lives. Now, I'm, just, I'm flat honest with you, you know? Um, and so the C, the exit exam has value in their lives because they have to have that exit exam to get a high school diploma. And so, um, we're still working to find whatever it is that will, you know, spark that in them. And I, I think, you know, just the fact that there were a few that scored proficient last year on one of those tests, I think is huge. And, um, again, we've got new, we've got some great new teachers and I think we may start beginning to see, just based on their skills and their enthusiasm, some better scores. But mostly it's convincing the kids that it's important to take any of those tests seriously because as they get out into the real world and they're starting to take, you know, employment exams and those kinds of things, they want to do their best on them. And every time they take one of those tests and do a good job on it, it's going to bode well for the next test. So, um, that's kind of the focus that we're taking and, um, but I don't know how successful we're going to be with that, so.
Well, I understand that. I mean, I, I can see that, that, that as a sizable problem because, um, it's hard, it is hard to get students to take tests seriously to begin with. So, thank you.
But they take the exit exam very seriously.
It has consequences.
Absolutely, it does. Absolutely.
Thanks, Ms. Abney. I just want to acknowledge you have a, a colleague here who must have come to support you, Mr. Mitch Torino, so I would like to introduce him. It's always nice to have, have some support when you're making a presentation.
Absolutely.
Um, I, I just, I just have some generic comments in it and it has mostly to do with the, the budget, um, sheets since we are here to talk about categorical spending on student achievement. For the record, you have over $244,000. There's no total line on the sheet. Not your fault. You were just, you were filling out a form, but it would be extremely helpful. And the other piece that would be helpful, and I don't, I don't know that it came into play for you, but very often, um, certain people are, uh, doing a number of functions and there's not been, it's not you. There's not been a breakdown of the money that they're being paid necessarily. You can read it as being duplicative. It, I'll talk about it when we get to some other plans. But I find the budget format not particularly informative, I guess is really what it comes down to. Uh, just a quick question about your math spending, though. Going back, your eleventh graders obviously are focused on trying to get through the exit exam. Your eleventh and twelfth graders. What happens in ninth and tenth grade for math? Is the focus entirely on algebra? Is it filling gaps to get to teaching algebra?
I have no ninth graders.
Okay. But that can change, okay.
Right, now, as a, as a general rule, we, we do not enroll ninth graders unless they are placed with us by the board from an expulsion hearing. As a, as a general rule, ninth graders, um, need to have an opportunity to go to high school and see whether or not they can be successful there. So, um, we generally enroll 10th graders first. And the focus for 10th graders is on Algebra I. And most of our students, um, on, on all of the campuses, we teach Algebra I as our general math class because most of our students haven't passed Algebra I when they come to us.
Okay, but a lot of them have been exposed to Algebra I.
They've been exposed to it, but they failed it.
Okay, got it.
Um, we do have some students out at one of our campuses where I have my most experienced and credentialed math teacher who need geometry and who need Algebra III, IV. And, um, she's actually teaching that to them during a credit recovery period, kind of on the side while other students are working independently. But as a general rule, we teach Algebra I and, you know, we're kind of filling in the gaps as we go.
Thank you. That was it.
Oh, all right. You're welcome. Thank you.
Had a schedule, yay.
I talk fast.
No, you were well-prepared. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Turnbull.
And we are getting back to our, and I'm timing all of these, by the way. We'll have a little treat for the, who was under. We're going to get back to our regular schedule with Mr. Swanitz and Dos Pueblos High School.
Good evening.
I called ahead to say that there was horrible traffic on the 101 coming south because I was in the same boat as you.
Yeah, I'm glad you got the message. I, I took almost fifty minutes getting here from DP when, um, I just didn't take into account holiday traffic. I knew there would be some traffic, but...
I didn't take into account either.
Okay. Well, good evening. Thank you. Glad to be here, uh, to present to you our single plan. You have in front of you an executive summary of the plan with one exception that I'd like to call your attention to. The document that I photocopied and brought to you is incomplete and I will address Section Six verbally and I can certainly provide you with the correct document, uh, at a later time if you prefer. Dos Pueblos High School is a comprehensive high school of twenty-three hundred and forty-eight students enrolled as of today. Twelve percent of those students are English learners and they are all served by, uh, one hundred and seven teachers. I've been asked to, uh, focus my comments today on three areas of school-wide improvement and they are improving English learners' performance on the English Language Arts section of the California High School Exit Exam, improving it to at least the minimum standards established by No Child Left Behind in order to make our adequate yearly progress. For the 2007-08 school year, that is thirty-three point four percent of students, uh, scoring proficient or advanced. Second area of school-wide focus is improving the percentage of students scoring proficient or advanced in the Algebra I California Standards Test by at least three percent to thirteen percent for the '07-08 school year. And our third area of focus is to meet our API performance goal in the 2008 API reporting cycle with a minimum API gain of five points. And assuming the same formula used in '06-07, that would be a 788.
School-wide.
School-wide, yes. In arriving at these, uh, these performances, these school-wide focus areas, I considered some data. With regard to our English learners' performance on the California High School Exit Exam, it's important to note that since 2004-05, the benchmark set by the NCLB legislation for AYP compliance has been twenty-two point three percent proficient or advanced. Uh, on the sophomore census administration of the California High School Exit Exam, uh, in that timeframe, our EL students at DP have progressed from eighteen percent proficient advanced all the way up to thirty percent proficient advanced, so well-clearing that benchmark set by NCLB. In 2007-08, however, the benchmark for adequate yearly progress compliance increases to thirty-three point four percent. So at current levels of thirty percent proficient advanced, our EL students would not meet the adequate yearly progress goal. And so, uh, critically, that is a major area of focus is making sure that those EL students clear that benchmark for this school year. Uh, with regard to improving the percentage of students performing, uh, scoring proficient or advanced on the Algebra I CST, um, I, I examined the fact that in the past, Dos Pueblos has experienced a decline in the percentage of students performing proficient or advanced on the, on the '06-07 CST in particular, in Algebra I, when compared to '05-06. In '05-06, fourteen percent of our Algebra I students were proficient advanced. In '06-07, just ten percent were proficient or advanced. And though I didn't put the specific scores there, uh, the, um, that falls well short of the state average. Uh, oh, actually, I did put that one in there. State average of twenty-four percent proficient or advanced in Algebra I. So, uh, to me, that is a shocking statistic and one that bears, uh, a great deal of our attention. More alarming than that is the fact that forty-three percent, the largest performance band on that Algebra I CST, falls in the below basic category. So I'm very concerned about our Algebra I scores and I think that's also a justifiable, uh, very critical area for us to grow in. And then finally, our school-wide academic performance index. Um, Dos Pueblos, I'm sad to report, has experienced three consecutive years of API declines when you consider the base API to the growth API. It's not comparing apples and apples to go back and, and look at the API over time because the formulas are changed every, roughly every two years. But after a fifty-three-point gain on our API in, uh, 2004, which brought us to 799, one point short of the statewide goal of eight hundred, our API has continually dropped, um, to 783. Still not, uh, not unrespectable, but not where we'd like to see it. So, um, I don't think it's unreasonable that we had a little backsliding after such a large gain. Sometimes those large gains are statistical anomalies and it takes a couple of years for things to settle out. However, I think we are a better school than 783 and I have every expectation that within the next couple of years, we will cross that eight hundred threshold. But not without some focused attention and work. With regard to the school in general and some of our, um, highlights, I think one of the most unique things about Dos Pueblos High School is the culture of learning that exists there. I think everyone from parents to educators from other school sites to administrators who walk on our campus would tell you that there is a palpable difference in the way that our campus feels compared to many other schools. And that, I think, has a lot to do with the relationships that exist between teachers and students, the, um, the, uh, the relationships that students have among one another. It really has more of a collegiate feel on our campus than, than other schools have. And inherent in that is a, a real value of education. So most, most all students, you can tell, are there to learn and are interested in it. We have strong, dynamic, academically oriented programs such as the International Baccalaureate Program, Dos Pueblos Engineering Academy. We have a rich complement of City College dual enrollment and AP classes, as do the other schools. But all of those things help to keep academics at the forefront at Dos Pueblos High. You've probably already seen these statistics, but I think they bear mentioning. We had forty-eight students this year, nearly ten percent of our senior class who were recognized in the, uh, as, recognized for their academic achievement as a result of their performance on the PSAT. Forty-eight students were named as either National Merit Scholarship semifinalists or commended students, National Achievement Award semifinalists or commended students, or National Hispanic Recognition Program honorees. And that's nearly ten percent of our class, our senior class, being honored amongst the top less than one percent of students nationwide. But all of our emphasis is not strictly on the upper-end students. We do have programs and, and a strong emphasis on... We do have programs and a strong emphasis on students in the middle and at the lower-performing, lower-achieving levels. I'm pleased with the way that our Avid program is developing and the way that it serves the needs of the students in the middle who are historically underrepresented in four-year sec-, post-secondary institutions, who have a dearth of role models in going, in college-going, and also who have the lack of knowledge of how to navigate the process of applying to and paying for college. We have a rich career, and I'd like to mention also, as I know that you were interested in the Avid program in the La Cuesta presentation, Avid is really taking hold quickly, growing roots. And those kids are feeling very connected to school and very interested in school. And we're seeing that there are improvements in their grades and their attendance and everything else associated with that as a result of having that hook back into school. Another hook back into school is our Career Technical Education Program. We have a variety of programs that help a lot of those, all students really, but primarily those middle and lower-end students to be connected to school. We have sectors representing engineering, computer graphics and design, construction technology, restaurant occupations, among others. And those do give context to the education of many of our students and keep them interested. We have a variety of specified programs, including Excel, AIM, which stands for Advancement in Mathematics, Basic English Skills, classes that support and are geared towards helping our less academically successful students, including our English learners or special education students and those at risk of failing or who have failed the California High School Exit Exam. Another sort of hallmark of our school is the rich tradition that we have, especially in the arenas of athletics and academics. Those programs are very well subscribed to and are another way that we have to have of keeping kids interested and involved in school. It's not listed in your brief, but we have over 70 clubs and, on campus. And those clubs help contribute to the overall culture of the campus because we have students from all walks that participate in those clubs and get to know each other in, outside of a classroom setting and outside of the lunch room. Barriers, things that I'm concerned about, like other schools, I'm gravely concerned about the achievement gap, as I know you are. Our Hispanic students are, do traditionally perform less well than their white counterparts on standardized assessments. And we would like to see that change and turn around. There's no easy answer to that, but there are solutions to try. The other barriers that I'm struggling with are the hard cap restrictions that were in the newly negotiated teacher contract and the attendant cost-saving decrease in staffing ratios. They have severely impacted Dos Pueblos High's ability to serve our constituents in the manner in which we and they have become accustomed. And also that there is a dearth of structured professional development time within the school day at Dos Pueblos, which limits the ability of the site administration and the faculty to implement educational initiatives, which are critical to school improvement. The three goals that we've set and how we kind of are, the three goals that I've mentioned and how we kind of intend to get there are to increase the percentage of 10th grade English learners in their attaining proficiency on English Language Arts, as measured by the California High School Exit Exam, from 30% to at least 33%. That gets them over that 32.3% required for AYP. And the timeframe for that is to be done during the '07-'08 school year. Methods by which we do that are, we have a bilingual coordinator of community student relations who's paid for out of categorical funding and who interfaces with the EL parent community to provide support to them and monitoring of EL students and their academic performance and their testing goals. In the second semester of this year, a KC English coach will be designated to work with EL teachers and teachers of SADIA English Language Arts classes to improve instruction and student learning. The particular teacher that we have in mind for doing this is extremely skilled, one would say, an expert in literacy and in pedagogy and teaching and reaching out to those lower-level students or students at risk, has had great success in teaching our KC remediation class. The EL department chair has been provided with an additional period of release time to work as a data analyst to assist EL teachers in gathering and analyzing data on EL student performance and in recommending strategic plans for improvement for those students. We also provide Excel tutoring within, both within the school day and out of the school day, specifically geared towards working with EL students to assist them with fundamental skill building in an academic environment. The, we also, in order to meet that goal, have identified staffing, which can be allocated to provide a 20-minute, the mandatory 20-minute period of daily instruction in English for EL students in a seventh-period skill-building class. Secondly, student performance on standards-based, locally-developed Common Assessments, as well as on the Algebra I California Standards Test, will demonstrate improved mathematical competency. Measurably, the percentage of students scoring proficient or advanced on the Algebra I CST will improve from 10% in '06-'07 to 13% in '07-'08. That 3% figure is an attempt at setting a realistic target. I would love to sit here and say we're going to shoot for 24% to catch up to the statewide average. But I think incremental growth is a more realistic approach. And you get to celebrate the small successes along the way. In order to do so, we have allocated funding to provide, to support the Algebra I professional learning community, wherein Common Lesson Planning, Common Assessments, Quarterly Benchmarks, and Edgiosoft Data Analysis and Curriculum Monitoring and Adjustments are taking place. And we also have plans similar to what we talked about in English, to have a KC Math Coach who will work with the teachers of 9th grade Algebra I students who are at risk of failing the California High School Exit Exam to improve their instruction and thereby student learning. And that particular teacher has also had great success teaching the Advancement in Mathematics class and dealing with students who have already failed the High School Exit Exam and was one of only 15 teachers chosen statewide to participate in a conference in Sacramento to be trained as a writer of exit exam questions in mathematics. And so, she participated in that and will be, have great insights in teaching teachers how to teach students to do well on that exam. Finally, the School-Wide Growth Academic Performance Index will increase by five points from the base API in the 2008 reporting cycle. And again, to that end, we have teachers who have been funded out of Title II funding to collaborate in professional learning communities, to align curricula, instructional materials, to assessment, and to California State Conscience Standards across the curriculum. And finally, to pay for teachers to go to the Avid Conference in San Diego, the Summer Institute, which is not just for Avid-elected teachers, but is for teachers in the core academic subjects as well, to, to just teach them good teaching. And there is some good staff development there. I view Avid as something which ultimately, over time, will reach its fingers out, insinuate itself into the entire school community and the learning culture that exists there. In terms of professional development, Dos Pueblos does not currently have the luxury that some of the other schools enjoy of banking minutes to provide for late starts or early release days in which to provide staff development. Consequently, we rely on the three days of pre-service staff development in August for the bulk of our staff development. And we relegate small portions of our staff meetings monthly to some staff development presentation. But generally, once those three days in August are done, we don't have a great deal of time in which to spend training teachers, at least not on school-wide initiatives. We have sent teachers away to conferences, they come back and they share information from those conferences. But I would be very eager to see us approve a model where we could bank some minutes and have at least bimonthly late starts for staff development, time during which PLCs could meet, but could be given some focus direction on where they're to go. My interest, and I'm actually dipping down a little bit into Section 6, which you don't really have a complete version of, which is that, that we would take on some of the difficult issues, such as rigor in the curriculum, calibrating our curriculum to the state standards, and hiring in expert staff developers to come in and train our teachers and then touch bases with them over time during the year to check progress. You know, the hit-and-miss approach of staff meetings and the all-at-once approach of staff development at the beginning of the year is not really an adequate model for delivering effective professional development, in my mind. But as I've said, we have, we are, we are trying to bridge gaps and patch things together. We do have professional learning communities working and functioning on campus. Many of them volunteer their time to do the, on their lunch hours. We have the math department, the English department, PLCs in particular, meet regularly during their lunch periods to work on the kinds of things that we've talked about PLCs doing. Other departments have elected to be paid outside of the school day to do that. It's a less effective model because so many of our teachers have young children and outside of commitments and coaching and so forth and so on, that they're not all able to participate as, as they would be during the school day. So, with regard to the overall school leadership, my emphasis is on improving rigor, aligning curriculum to standards, calibrating curriculum to standards, and generally improving the overall instructional program and student performance to the level that I believe our school is capable of achieving. And to that end, having some professional development time built into the school day. I should mention, by the way, I think I forgot to mention this, that we do have a current proposal out that's being vetted by SBTA at the moment to put on, to distribute a ballot to hold late start, to bank minutes for a late start for the second semester. And if that gets approved, we'll be able to jump in both feet, we're ready to go. And that concludes my presentation, I'm ready for your questions.
Great, thank you. Do you want to start, Ms. Parker?
Sure, thank you for all that information about late starts because you're now the only comprehensive high school that doesn't have a late start, is that correct?
Correct.
A regular late start day. And so, I was very curious if you were going to be bringing it back to your staff, so, thanks for answering that.
You're welcome.
Be interested to hear what happens with that. For the high schools, San Marcos is the only one that we got that, the summary of the API and AYP, is that correct?
The data sheets.
The data sheets.
We're going to be included, and I see that they aren't. We'll get copies here and get them to you right now.
Okay, great.
Thanks.
I just had one other quick question, and that was about your library. You have here, you're putting $15,000 towards supplemental library materials, continue to provide current relevant standards-aligned library books, periodicals, reference and other materials, measures library usage and teacher-student satisfaction with library services. How are you measuring teacher and student satisfaction? Have you surveyed students and teachers on it, or do you plan to?
Our plan is to survey teachers and students, yes. We, you know, with the emphasis on, you know, accountability and measurable goals, then yes, our intent is this year to create a baseline survey of student and teacher satisfaction with library services and numbers of volumes in the stacks and relevance, the average age of publishing, that sort of thing, and to create a record of that.
Okay, all right.
By which we can compare future years.
Super, thank you.
You're welcome.
Go ahead, Ms. Malacca.
The math and English KC coaches?
Yes, ma'am.
Are they credential teachers, are they?
They are, yes.
Are they going to be working with individual students, or do they work with the teachers? I'm not quite clear how that works.
The plan is for our KC coaches, they are credential teachers. And our plan is that they would work with, with our current, our teachers of students who are at risk to be able to provide them strategies to use with those teachers. As I mentioned, the two teachers, the math KC coach and the English KC coach, are the two teachers who have had great success working with students who have failed the exit exam. They know the strategies of how to take kids through question design, you know, concepts, and how to get that into a meaningful, meaningful form for students. But the emphasis is on coaching the teachers to provide the instruction. The KC coaches may do a model lesson within a class, but the idea is that they would be doing that for the benefit of the teachers, not so much for the benefit of the students.
In terms of the barrier, you mentioned that the hard cap restrictions, that it's impacted your ability to offer certain kinds of classes?
Yes, ma'am.
Could you tell what kind of classes?
Well, you know, for example, and this was, this is a relevant example because this is something that was talked about much during the beginning of this school year as we were trying to level classes and get them under the caps in the contractual timeline. But for example, under the old model of averaging, if I had 74 students who wanted to take an AP class, and that's a high number, ideally, I would love to take and offer two sections of 25 and one of 24 and meet those students' needs. But, and provide a smaller learning environment and all of those things. But with the understanding and the necessity of cost-saving to the district, I understand the need to increase class sizes. However, 74 kids can't fit into two sections at 35 with a hard cap. So, I have the choice of trying to squeeze some blood out of a turnip and create a section where there may not be funding to create one in order to open another section to serve the needs of those additional four kids, or I have to tell four kids that they can't take the class. And that's a really awful position to be in. It's not something that was comfortable for me. Fortunately, in this case, and in that one situation with the AP language class, I was able to find the funding to create a final section as the last sort of, that was it, that was the bottom of the barrel. But if we had an averaging model as we used to have, if I needed to create two sections of 37, I would just need to make sure that those teachers had fewer kids in another section to be able to offer those. So, the hard cap really does, because kids don't, groups of kids don't divide evenly by 35. It, it makes it much more difficult to be able to create a workmaster schedule that serves the needs and the desires of all of your students.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Dr. Mall.
Thank you, I like this. It's just the format, because I can, I hate these.
The actual reports, they're very difficult to slog through, I agree with Dr. Harner.
To read through and go through, yeah. Figure out what it is you're going to do, it's nicer to read this. I missed the data, and I would take you to task for providing only data for all students. Because the problems are not all student problems, the problems are in subgroups. And we really need those data. And in the absence of data you supply, I supply some.
Okay.
Hispanic, Latino, API, in the last three years, a net decrease of 75 points. Socioeconomically disadvantaged, over the last three years, a net decrease of 78 points. English learners over the last three years, a net decrease of 32 points. I'm trying to read here and see the solution to there. And I'm having trouble making some connections. So, let me start with English language learners.
All right.
I see a CASI coach, basic English CASI remediation class, EL Department Chair, Excel tutoring. What I don't understand, and I'm sure you can explain this to me.
Sure.
Students are taking, there's the twin set of goals, learn English and learn the corporate one.
Correct.
Simultaneously, okay? So, I see, when I see an ELD class, I see learn English.
Correct.
Okay, but I don't see as much about learn science, if you're an English learner, learn social studies as an English learner, learn the content in those areas and how, and you may be doing this, but I don't see it here, how you plan to do that. Now, I'm aware of programs like, and these, I read these as words and then I read them enough times to realize that they, that they're probably named the program. Reading across the curriculum is?
Not the name of a specific, not a specific program, but a general educational concept.
Philosophy is it, or concept?
Concept, that all, that all teachers are.
I guess I read it even in italics.
Sure.
But, and then I've, and I've looked at some research, and for the life of me, can't think of the name of this one particular researcher, a pair of them actually, who prepare materials for the... of the name of this one particular researcher, a pair of them actually, who prepare materials for the science teacher to use with ELs in the science class. And I guess SADIA is about that. But I don't, I don't see, I don't see that here. Could you help me with that?
Sure. If you dig a little bit deeper, and it wasn't in the executive summary, because it wasn't a subcomponent of one of the ones I was talking about, however, we have set aside money here for necessary instructional supplies and materials for EL classrooms to be identified by the teachers as they see fit. That's specifically for the EL classrooms, but could be actually envisioned also to be used with SADIA classes. And there are various things that might be included in that, and some of those may be related to what you're talking about, reading across the curriculum, though that, that really talks about the responsibility of all teachers to teach literacy and not just English classrooms, English teachers.
But how do you, how do you, I mean, that's, I know you can stand up there all day and say to your teachers, you're responsible to do this, but how do you, how do you make it happen?
Well, I'll be perfectly honest with you. Even English teachers aren't experts at teaching how to read, teaching kids, high school kids how to read. Elementary school teachers get lots of training in how to teach kids how to read. The KC coaches, as I mentioned, especially in English, is a literacy expert. She was trained in literacy in Long Beach Unified School District and can talk circles around me when it comes to talking about literacy.
Look at their program, they have a very comprehensive program.
Yes, they do. And Mrs. Magner, who's the teacher that I'm proposing be our KC English coach, and who teaches the basic English skills classes remediation, is, is an expert, there's no question. The most expert person I've ever spoken to about teaching literacy to all kids in all subjects and all disciplines. So as a component of being a KC coach, we anticipate that by working with those kids who are at risk of not doing well, the EL students, the low socio-economic students, the students who have failed the KC, by working, by her working, she will have an expert, we're fortunate enough to have an expert on our staff on how to teach teachers to teach reading, and so that would be a big key component that she would be doing is coaching the teachers in how to instruct kids.
But I, see, I guess what, let me, let me just, I'm struggling for words to.
Please.
I guess what I miss here is the gestalt, the overview. What is the integrative component? I see the pieces here, and I see her as a piece, although she sounds talented enough, maybe she could, maybe she could be the person who, who puts it all together. What I, what I'm missing is how, is something that puts it together. Then secondly, and this is a puzzle that I have, as I look at data for your school and for a lot of schools, you know, you don't have a huge proportion of English learners compared to many schools.
No, we don't.
And you have, according here, of English learners who are native Spanish speakers, you've got 325 of them, oh six, oh seven, you had oh six, oh seven. How do you own a campus like yours? See, I, I've seen schools that, that are, you know, 99% EL, you know, all Spanish language, and I can picture, at that school, boy, that, that could be a comprehensive part of the school culture. Everybody is into literacy. But how do you do it in a school like yours where literacy is not a problem for the majority of students?
It's difficult, and it's one of the challenges that we face. There's no question about that, because you're right. You, if you, if you try to make literacy in and of itself a campus-wide initiative, you're not going to have a lot of buy-in from, from teachers who teach advanced kids in upper-level classes. Now, is literacy a problem campus-wide? Absolutely. It's not just the Hispanic or Latino kids, it's not just low socio-economic or special education kids. There are all sorts of kids who are not reading at grade level who could benefit from instruction in literacy. Again, getting overall buy-in and convincing teachers that they need to take some of their time to teach reading in a core class or even an elective class is a challenge. It's difficult. It's been tried, in fact, at Dos Pueblos, they had a literacy coach there that I understand was not, it wasn't an effective model for delivering it. So when you're looking at those 12% of EL students, and let's just focus on them for the time, for the moment, trying to come up with a plan that is robust and meets the needs of such a small segment of your population is challenging. I think that you're probably right. If you had 99% English learners in your school, that would be your staff development, that would be your.
In the state of California, the school that made the largest progress for English learners were Buena Park High School, Garden Road District, okay? Well, my God, they've got 830 English learners.
Yeah.
Which is a huge number, and, and they are not, in fact, they also have a percentage of, in there, a significant percentage of Vietnamese speakers. But it's, you know, in your situation, it's different, and I'm just, well, I'm, I don't want to repeat myself.
Well, you know, I understand. I understand your concerns that we did have a drop. I would call your attention to, I don't know that we have the data in front of you, but our EL students did have significant gains on API last year. They declined back to the previous year's levels this year, and we're still in conversations at the site about what was the reason for that.
You had growth, what, oh six, oh seven, or oh five, oh six?
Oh five, oh six.
Yeah, because oh six, oh seven, you would drop 93 points.
Yes, and I think that would, Dr. Hayden would agree with me.
You almost hit the bottom. There are two schools in California that dropped worse than that.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I would think, I think, Dr. Hayden and I have had conversations about it.
Well, you're talking about the plus 61 the previous year.
Correct.
Yeah. And in fact, he and I had a chat about that today, and it may, it may very well be, as someone else said, there are a bit of an anomaly involved, and what goes up has to come down. But let's hope what goes down has to come up.
That's the plan, yes.
I also noticed, note here that your, your redesignation rate, oh six, oh seven, 16%, kind of, that's in the middle with the data I have. There's room for enormous amount of improvement there. Schools running into, in 35, 40% redesignation. And then, and you see this, I've, I play around with a lot of data, and, and you can plot the data, look at the number of ELs, follow a cohort, follow cohorts through time and see what they, what happens to that population from ninth to 10th to 11th to 12th grade. And, and some schools are showing an average decrease per year of 30% of the number of ELs. So by the time they get to 12th grade, those cohorts are getting down, they're pretty small.
You probably will notice that one of my, one of my overall school goals listed under English language development is the CELT advancement goal. And I've actually specifically called out how many students, but the goal is that, you know, students will progress through that, that program, at least at the rate of the annual yearly progress that's expected of them, and that they will be re-designated at the end of that process within one year.
One, one thing about, you said CELT, right?
CELT, yes.
Remember, we were talking about that study. One finding of this, in this elementary school level, but I'm not sure that it wouldn't, would not apply. One main, one finding of a major study was that there's an over-reliance on CELT testing. And particularly at the high school, at least in the data I have, the CELT test is not a very good predictor of CST scores. Yeah, I know it's part of, it's, it's about redesignation, but, but you, I can see an over-reliance on CELT testing. I think the finding was over-reliance on CELT testing combined with explicit ELD instruction without the broader contact context we've been talking about, and the, particularly the reading into the core curriculum.
Yeah, that, I just, I called it a CELT, it was a goal under, under CELT because that will establish which years the kids are in, but I do agree with you that you need to look at, you know, all of your statistical measures, all of your assessment data to come up with a comprehensive plan to address those students' needs. I don't rely on the CELT data for a whole lot more than just letting me know how many kids I have at each level.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead, Ms. Cordero.
Well, I, excuse me. I only have a couple of questions.
Okay.
You won't mind if I don't ask you a lot?
I'll be hurt, but you know, I'll get over it.
I had, oh, I had a quick question regarding, on page 18 of 41, you have a, a plan to provide primary and supplementary instructional materials to at-risk students without benefit of other support services in mathematics as needed, et cetera, et cetera. And you're paying for that out of Title I funds, so I'm assuming that these are Title I students?
Correct.
And aren't there other, aren't, wouldn't all Title I students have access to other support services?
Yes and no. I mean, yes, there are lots of different support programs that we have on our campus and that they would have access to. They're not excluded from those programs. I don't mean to misspeak. They're not excluded from any program that we have, but these would be supplemental to, and I guess the wording there is probably misleading, but the idea is that I wanted to be sure that it was clear that the money was going to be going to use to support those at-risk Title I students specifically, as opposed to students who don't have, who are not allowed to benefit from the use of Title I funds.
Okay, so these students might have other avenues of support as well?
Absolutely, and not likely that they would.
Okay, okay. And then I had just, oh, a quick question, I think, regarding the network administrator that you identified, and the cost is estimated at 37,500. And I was wondering, is that the full cost, or is, are SIP library funds only paying for part of the cost?
That is the full cost. He's a part-time employee. He also works at another job, so he doesn't rely on us for his sole wages and the other benefit that we get out of him being a employee of another school district in the, in the area, actually, is that he takes his benefits from them, so I don't have to pay for his benefits.
Ah, okay.
So that's, that's why we have been able to have that network administrator at such a bargain. But yes.
So, so how many hours do you have? Did I miss that?
He's, I believe he's five hours, five or six hours. He comes in the evenings, late after.
Per day?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Those are my only quick questions.
You're welcome.
Okay, I'm back to my budget stuff.
All right.
And it has nothing to do with faulting principles, except that the template itself is incomplete. I was curious about some of the particular positions that are being funded with categorical funds, because dollar amounts are included, and I am assuming that they are total dollar amounts, and I'll, I'll make my point.
Sure.
For instance, the, the data analysis, the Title I coordinator is mentioned several times with a figure of $17,500. Is that a single $17,500 in the budget, or is it two times 17,500?
Two times.
Okay.
It's split between two categories, because I wanted to show that, being that it's funded from different funds.
Great. And then the bilingual coordinator is $50,000, and that person has a number of responsibilities, but is 50,000 the total?
Total amount.
Okay, great. And I think the others were pretty self-explanatory, but you can see what I'm talking about. When amounts repeat, identical amounts repeat, it's not always clear if it's coming from two different funds, or, do you see what I'm saying?
This is harder if you don't mind. That's, that's something that you could just direct us, that you would prefer to do. I don't know what the other principles do.
I'm giving, I'm giving Mr. Turnbull the evil eye over here.
You're giving him directions now?
Yeah, okay.
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, I try to, I do that on my own initiative to try to show that, you know, fun, money from various different funds are maybe supporting one position, and that it's that position has multiple responsibilities, but it would be actually much simpler and obviously less complicated. There's also a function of the, the single plan online that you, we did not give you, we weren't requested for it, where you can do a budget report either by funding source or by expenditure, which might make that a little bit clearer to you if we were to provide that to you in the future.
Okay. Then, I, this is something that I know there's no requirement, but I think it's a particular flaw in categorical spending, and we've talked about it before, it's not peculiar to DP, but a number of the people whose positions are funded almost entirely through categorical funding, or entirely through categorical funding, also sit on site council. And while it doesn't, it, it's in the spirit of, I'm sorry, it's the spirit, it's within the rule of the law for them to be represented on site council, I think it's a defect of the spirit of the law. You know, when people know if their job is funded through categorical funding, that they may be in jeopardy for the year, I'm sure that they rush to join the site council when often it's very difficult to muster up site council members. I, I would just say in general, not to you, but to any principal, that I think that you need to be very wary. It's very difficult to have really free and open discussions when you know that the person whose job is on the line is present at the table, so.
I, I do agree with that, and there, there is a crisis of conscience there. As you say, sometimes in these positions, especially in the classified world, they're not terribly interested in serving on the site council, except for the ones whose positions are funded by it. However, I would say that the people, at least on my site council, who are funded by that, yes, it's difficult to have the conversations with them in the room, however, they always do abstain themselves from the votes having to do with the funding on their own positions.
And do they participate in the discussion?
They're present for the discussion, and they're sometimes called upon for reference, but generally they don't advocate on their own behalf.
Okay. So I just wanted to raise that as an issue.
I understand, I agree.
It's not an attack on, on any individual. One more question, then, that has to do with the athletics and activities. And clearly, the goal is to try and get more students to participate in those kinds of activities. You mentioned 70 clubs, and actually, the position for the activities and athletics secretary is funded through SIP funds. The question is, how will you track that? How will you know what percentage of students? I mean, it's easy to do for athletics, they're indicating that it's their PE option. How would you know about other involvements? Because obviously, not all students are, are going to be involved in athletics.
Well, actually, we, she just provided me with the first report that I've asked her to do to document student participation, and some of the things that she looks at as you're talking, obviously with athletics, rosters, PE enrollments, that kind of thing. Any club that's sanctioned by the school, by the ASP, has to have minutes of their meetings and demonstrate attendees, so she's documenting, counting up kids that are participating in clubs and activities that way. She has records of numbers of kids, both, both as a, as a, as a whole, who attend, who purchase and attend dances. We have numbers of kids individually who have attended one or more dances during the school year, and those are all data that comes out of the, the accounting software. So we are able to kind of get, she's able to put together a pretty fair report. It was a one-pager, but it was a good report of how many kids she serves as a result of.
Is that linked back to counselors, then? Where they have an individual student that they're, you know, trying to provide some direction for, that the counselor knows what the student's been involved in, or?
That's not currently part of our process.
Okay, I mean, I think it might be a good link to make. And I want to compliment you on the ELAC committee, the joint ELAC committee with Greta Valley and Dos Pueblos. I think it's a really good model to have that, that six-year connection.
It's been amazing with the, the increased turnout that we've had as a result of doing that, and I don't know if I mentioned it or not, but we also are meeting monthly as opposed to quarterly.
Oh.
And the reason was that as a result of conversations that came out with our ELAC members, was that when we met quarterly, they felt like they were a rubber stamp, a sounding board, that they were just getting together to say yea or nay to some proposal or funding, and, you know, something, that they were not really getting any information that was of any benefit to them. And so while they, yes, they have that function, that's something that they are required to do, meeting monthly gives us the opportunity to bring in speakers to provide other activities for them that are better, more beneficial to them.
And actually, that's feedback that I've heard from other ELAC committee members, that when they were meeting quarterly, that, that's exactly right. They felt like they had no say in decision-making, that it was all presented to them as a fait accompli, as a rubber stamp.
Yeah, and there's, there's a component to it, too, that it's like a parent-education component also that we're able to do with those monthly meetings. And so as a result, when people felt like they were just being used and they were, you know, a rubber stamp, come in and say, here's what we're doing, now that they feel like they have a little bit more of a voice and they get a little something out of the meetings, our attendance is way up.
Good, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we are at our break time now. Do we wish to take a break? Do we wish to? Oh, okay, everyone's looking at me like you're nuts, Nancy. Yeah, let's take a break. Okay, we'll take a 10 or 15-minute break.
Do we wish to take a break? Of course we do.
Do, way back when, we used to. Begin with Santa Barbara High School. And Mr. Turnbull?
We're very happy to have Dr. Mark Caprito here, the new principal of Santa Barbara High School. He inherited a fine school after a fine leader, and, wow, I'll let. He inherited a fine school after a fine leader, and, wow, I'll let Mr. Caprito. Yeah, that's, I'll let Dr. Caprito speak for the school.
Thank you. Pleasure to be here. Share some pieces of information. I've given you two, 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 actually, two pieces of information. One is what I presented for you, the executive summary. The other piece came from Hayden, and it is some data. What you'll know as we go through, some of the data doesn't necessarily align, because there are some differences between what is on the state website and what you've been presented, what Dr. Hayden has. Santa Barbara High School, the demographic information, number of students is twenty-three oh seven. The percentage of ELs are sixteen, nineteen point six, and the RFFs are sixteen point four percent. And the number of teachers is one twenty-seven. School-wide focus areas, we have three major school-wide focus areas that we are looking at this year, and there are some combinations, and I'll go through those. The EL student achievement, goal number two is math and English language arts student achievement, and number three is the improved Casey achievement in English language arts and math. None of the three goals that are cited are new for two thousand seven eight. In each case, what we've done is taken a more in-depth look at specifics, and what we're going to do is look at new attainable goals over a period of time with some additional targeted strategies. The analysis of the data, this is where it gets a little bit interesting, and where you'll see some differences, and so I'm gonna, we'll just spend a bit, a few moments here. The summative informative assessment data is being used to target students in all major focus areas. California State tests, ESTs, and the Casey data are used to determine the level of academic placement in core academic courses. This is done throughout. Students identified at risk and scoring below three fifty on standardized assessments are placed in courses designed to assist or remediate skills in English language arts and math. The areas of focus, and I would like to just draw your attention to the chart, if I can. Oh, Hayden, did you give me that chart back? Where'd you go? Do you have that? Can I borrow your copy? Page two of the, of the summary. This was information that we were able to get off the website yesterday, and I want to thank Craig, because we didn't have any information that it was out there, and he called me, and so I was able to pull it off, actually, last night. It's new. And what it shows here is that the targeted subgroups, it's, it's a little discouraging, because the targeted subgroups that we have to meet, Hispanic, Latino, white, socioeconomic disadvantaged, English learners, and students with disabilities, we did not meet four out of the five. That's a little disappointing. You can see the two thousand six, seven growth and the target, and you can see that it's across the board. Across the board, we lost points in every area. It's difficult to explain that, and I'm gonna give it my best shot after not being there last year. But our greatest need is to work with the English learners and the socioeconomic students in English language arts and math. Information provided by the accountability report identified these two subgroup populations not meeting target growth. But you can see clearly that four have not met. A little disheartening, but you can see, again, it's across-the-board drops, sixteen points Hispanic and Latino, white with eleven, socioeconomic disadvantaged, seven, English learners, twenty-six, and students with disabilities, four. One of the things that we did, and I don't want to spend a lot of time elaborating here, but we have identified a lot of the kids in these areas, and we're pretty convinced that they're not taking these tests extremely seriously, especially when you look at the sheet that I gave you initially, you'll see the CST scores versus the, the Casey scores. Significant difference in the number of kids who passed. It's tremendous. It's in the seventies, eighties, nineties, compared to the four and five, six percent that we have in the CSTs. So what we're calculating is that high-stakes tests mean a lot more to these kids, and they're putting a lot more effort into the high-stakes tests, and not nearly enough into the CSTs. The school profile highlights that we have, some of the areas of strength that we have, and some of the areas of concern. The faculty, we have a committed faculty to see that all students achieve to their greatest degree possible. The flexibility of instructional staff to incorporate new strategies and assessment practices. The students with a desire to learn, given the appropriate learning environment. Quickly share with you that we interviewed over a hundred kids who had not passed the exit exam, almost two hundred kids in grades eleven and twelve. And what we've found with these kids is that they have a tremendous need for a different testing environment. It's, was amazing, the types of, pieces of information they gave us, the smaller testing environments, time to take a little bit of a break, particularly in tests where we were able to do that. Being able to gain some coping skills when there was levels of frustration, these are things, they're, they're general people's skills that they don't have in terms of, of being able to take a test for four hours. And these are some significant findings that we had, just after interviewing just about well over a hundred kids, and we're on our way to two hundred right now. So once we get this data collected, and we find a profile of the kids, we'll be able to get more targeted specific data, and develop these small groups, and try to provide them with some skills, coping skills, to manage long-term tests. The fiscal resources we have, we have enough fiscal resources available, they just have to be targeted towards programs and instructional practices that work. That's pretty clear. Actions to be taken for part, to promote the supportive school-wide patterns, with all the staff to, we want to work with all of our staff to utilize the best instructional practices, and working with students needing the greatest services. Improve the quality of standards-based instruction and assessment practices at the appropriate educational levels. Provide in-service training for all instructors based on a staff survey to determine the greatest area of instructional concern, including SUDI, AVID, and specific reading intervention programs. And then ensure SMART goals are met within each site plan goal area through ongoing monitoring and intervention. The, the SMART goals, I want to go through a couple. SMART goal number one, oh, I got it out of sequence, I'm sorry. I got it a little bit out of sequence because, simply because I gave the plan away and it came back crooked. Let me go to this one. Okay, I apologize. The first SMART goal we have, that I want to discuss with you, is the thirty percent of the EL students are going to be proficient on the quarterly English language arts assessments, and thirty-five percent will be proficient on quarterly math assessments, achieving eighty percent proficiency or better. What we're trying to do is get, on each quarter, three to five kids to move forward. We think that's critical. We think it's very important that we get the kids to move, and we also think it's real critical for our students to be able to advance to the next level. We know that it's really difficult for our kids to move from the basic to proficient band. It's very, very difficult for them. It's difficult for everybody. The specific activities that we'd like to work on, monitoring responsibilities and evaluation, evaluation of quarterly common assessments, specific instruction targeted deficiencies, use of math and EL literacy coaches for individualized instruction, use of SUDI and AVID strategies, English language development coordinator responsible for monitoring student progress. These people are critical to our process. Special projects coordinator, also somebody critical for responsible. I am responsible for ongoing gathering of assessment data to support instructors in the modification of curriculum and instruction. And English language instructors responsible for monitoring students DF lists in classes. This is very important to us. SMART goal number two, to increase percentage of all students attaining proficiency in respective math subject, math subject areas from twenty-one percent to thirty-six percent in quarterly subject standards-based assessments, and increase percentage of all students attaining proficiency on English language arts department quarterly assessments from twenty-five to thirty-six percent. We have lots of activities here, responsibilities and monitoring strategies that we're going to try to use, or that we have in place already. Local common standards-based assessments are going to be conducted quarterly in math and English language arts. Students will have access to computerized math programs. Tutoring services are available to all students. Math and English language arts coaches are available for students needing one-on-one assessment. The Mesa Club is available for students achieving below grade level, at risk of not passing the Casey. Staff will implement best practices with classroom instructors going through modeling, planning, and observation. Teacher-directed development of expository reading and writing comprehensive skill assessments are available through the texts that we have now, the whole texts. Technology is available for students considered at risk with accounts in Let's Go Learn and Chariot Casey Prep. Department chairs are going to take a greater role in monitoring curriculum alignment and mapping. English and math PLCs will be responsible for the mapping of curriculum. The development of the curriculum and standards-based formative and summative assessments. The department chairs will ensure common standards-based benchmark assessments are developed and implemented. The computer technician will be responsible for maintaining technology in all labs available to students. Special projects coordinator is going to be responsible for assessment oversight regarding student placement and appropriate level courses based on assessment data. English language coordinator is going to be responsible for monitoring academic achievement of EL students. And lastly, instructors in math and English language arts are going to take a greater role in quarterly monitoring of the DF list. SMART goal number three, to improve the percentage of Casey, or, I'm sorry, of students attaining proficiency, scores of three eighty on the English language arts and math portions of the Casey from twenty-one percent to thirty-six percent. The specific activities, responsibilities, monitoring and evaluation. Direct instruction of math and EL skills aligned with Casey using standards-based texts and computer-assisted education in supplementary math and EL classes. Utilize quarterly benchmark assessments in combo classes. Utilize CST and local assessments to place students appropriate level math and EL courses. Implement small group pull-out sessions for targeted areas of academic deficiency in math and English language arts using math and English language arts coaches for instruction. Provide ethical tutoring for all students preparing for the Casey. Develop stronger individualized instruction and provide materials for Casey prep courses. Incorporate a variety of differentiated instruction practices for math, English language arts, and Casey prep courses. Instructors are going to monitor local benchmark assessments using Edgiosoft, and they're going to reteach standards that are not met. Special programs coordinator is going to utilize data for student placement in Casey prep or combo classes, and the ELD coordinator will work with all staff to ensure EL students are achieving standards, and provide support services for those performing below academic standards. The professional developer for all of this is going to be on the back. If you look, turn the page, you'll see that there's a two thousand seven HDAF development plan, covers five or six critical areas, and then if you turn the page, it's pretty much laid out for you in two days, two consecutive days. Okay? Now, our goal, because we use our short days, our late start days, is to run this plan the first couple of days of the school year, so that we enter the school year with some pretty targeted pieces of information. So you can look through this, and then certainly I'll be open to questions. School leadership. Define the leadership role and approach in monitoring progress. As a leader, I'm responsible for providing the guidance, structure, and the shared vision to be accomplished. There's any question about that. My leadership role is a directive collaborative coach, to assist and serve all staff and students. It's clear the site must begin to monitor all students identified at risk through an ongoing practice of interventions and assessments. The human resource in every class unit must extend beyond the school day to ensure that all students are not only capable of achieving success, but are also supported in their efforts to do so. And we must recognize and believe that the one-size-fits-all approach to instruction and assessment practices is no longer the norm, but the exception. And lastly, a greater emphasis must be placed on assessments and the need to strengthen the academic rigor and expectations of all students. Some of the progress and development of professional learning communities. The progress at Santa Barbara in the development of professional learning communities and monitoring students has met with mixed reviews. I did a staff survey, and again, I'm just going to give you the, some of the, some of the highlights. It truly has been met with mixed emotions. There are some that really utilize time well, some that feel that the time could be better utilized in department meetings. I'm going to share with you that it is my opinion that it's new, and we have not given enough time to work yet. It's very new. And for schools to, especially when they're coming up against WASC accreditation years, to suggest that they don't need collaboration is not moving in the right direction. So we will be using the collaboration time much, much, much better in the future. Staff is adjusting to PLCs and the benefit of collaboration time. The math and science departments have done a nice job working to collaborate and develop common standards-based assessments, and are working on benchmark assessments. The English department continues their work on a standardized rubic to promote inter-rater reliability among readers. Social science department is working toward a common standards-based assessment for the end of the semester in all subjects. World language department is working on standardized assessments using national standards. Staff is using Edgiosoft as a tool for identifying student assessment scores, disaggregating data, creating common standards-based assessments, and identifying areas of strength and areas of concern. It's taking place among most departments and by most instructors. There are staff reluctant to use either the PLC or Edgiosoft as it was intended to be used, who will have to be coached into practice in order for Santa Barbara to move forward with this plan. How does a school respond when students are not meeting learning expectations? The information seems to affect the staff and how, and they show mixed emotions. It is difficult to determine that all staff takes responsibility for the entire student population. The staff survey indicated reluctance on the part of some to change what and how they teach. There are many staff that look to create new avenues of instruction to support students at risk of failing, and students are made aware of the many academic support programs available. With the exception of the staff development plan, which I think is a pretty detailed plan, that is, concludes my presentation. And I'm ready to answer questions.
Thank you. Ms. Cordera, shall we start with you?
Sure. Actually, I had a question on something in your, just really quickly, on something in your executive summary. Under SMART goal number three, direct instruction of math and English language arts skills aligned to the KC, to the Casey, using standards-based text and computer-assisted education in supplementary math and ELA classes. And I was just wondering exactly what, in terms of the supplementary math and English classes, these are the classes that students would take during the regular school day?
Yeah, we have supplemental math, KC classes for eleventh and twelfth graders during the normal school day, and for ninth and tenth graders who have not yet taken the Casey before or after school, based on their CST scores when they enter.
But, I mean, this is during their regular day, but it's in addition to their?
In addition to their six-period schedule.
To their six, six-period schedule. So what, I, I guess I'm trying to figure out what is the, what is the thing that is going to be different here?
Well, that's what we're working on. That's a great question. What we're working on is the strategies in the classrooms. One of the things that we talked to the students about recently was, what is exactly taking place in these classes, so that we can identify what your strengths and, and areas of weakness are. And some of the kids are telling us that it's targeted. They're looking at areas that they have really deficiencies in. Other students are telling us that they're given a warm-up, and then they go directly to a book, and it's just practice and practice and practice. And what we have spoken to the teachers about is reteaching, creating a new curriculum for these courses that is more of a strategic approach to looking at students and their deficiencies, rather than to looking at what they know. Because one of the things all the kids said was, I already know most of this stuff. It's what I don't know that I'm not learning. And so it's, it's, I mean, and how profound. So we are trying to create these strategies that target what they don't know. And that's new for the teachers, because it's start at A and go to Z. And it's very new for the teachers to be able to separate their students out and do some differentiated learning, providing a little bit more individualized instruction to the students with targeted areas focused on deficiencies and not necessarily what they know. That's what the change will be.
Okay. That makes, that actually makes sense to me. I was, I didn't get it from the?
We, we didn't get it either, until we asked the question.
Great, thanks. And then also, in, I think, in that same SMART goal, the last item, the ELD coordinator will work with all staff to ensure EL students are achieving standards and provide support services for those performing below academic standards. Again, I would ask here, I assume that that, that those students always get, have always gotten support services?
The students have always gotten support services. It's the teacher that's not necessarily getting support services, the instructional strategies that go along with what we're providing to kids. The teacher can go in and pull out the kids. That's not, that's not an issue. The question is, when the teacher, when the EL coordinator is not there, then what happens? So we really want to work with the teachers, as well as the kids, to ensure that they have the skills necessary to teach these kids in small breakout sessions when there's nobody there. So it's, it's a two, it's used two ways.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, so this is to train the teachers?
It's both.
And is it also to train the teachers on how to recognize when students need the support services?
Yeah, and that's part of what we're retraining our teachers right now. We wouldn't have picked this information up without talking to the kids. That's, that's where we are today. We're, we're actually looking at strategies for teachers that will help kids with what they need to know, rather than what they don't need to know. It's, it's, it's a big turnaround.
That, that seems, that seems like a very important turnaround.
Yeah, it is. It's, it really is.
Yeah, and then I had, I think I had one more question on the, again, on some of the, the the, I think you had one here, that the computer labs will be maintained and available for students and teachers to use as extended learning resources. Is that beyond what they're currently available for? And I noticed that there's no cost identified with that.
Yeah, it's, it's, the costs are, and that's, that again is another great question. The costs, they're ongoing costs, and I'm in the process right now of trying to figure out where all of these people come from. That's me. It's not, has nothing to do with, you know, it certainly is involved with the plan, but it's me. Because a lot of our, and Paul would maybe be able to help a little bit more with this, because there's a history here about categorical funding and where the, how the supplemental funds assist and who gets paid what. And that's what I'm currently working on today. And it's difficult because the budget, and I think it was acknowledged, it's hardly acknowledged, that there's pieces coming out of it, and that's where I'm working right now, to try to centralize where these budgets are coming from and more specifically target and come up with a better idea about visually how this person is funded. That's, that's me.
So do you anticipate then that there will be funding from categoricals assigned to that position?
There is money assigned to that position right now, the degree to which has not yet been determined. That's what I'm working on.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Well, that touches on my big question, which is, the site plan doesn't attach very much money to anything. And so I was wondering what was going on with that? So it sounds like you're-
It's me coming up with the budget because we have been, it's, we don't have, and I'm looking at final dollars right now, and I'm sort of struggling with attaching the dollar figures to the right people without going over. We have just, we are in the process of receiving, you know, not additional funding but more specific information and locking it down, and that's what I'm looking at. It did not make a lot of sense to me to attach a dollar figure and have to pull it out. The ones I knew are in there. The ones I don't know are not in there.
Okay.
Yeah, the money's there, but it really depends on if that's the most appropriate use of those funds. That's, that's what I have to see.
Okay. I'm a little unclear from where we are in data correction and so on and so forth. Did Santa Barbara High make AYP or no? It did not make AYP in either English or math? Can you, just English?
It's on, look on, if you look on the second page of the summary.
The second page of the summary.
Yeah. It'll tell you that, where it says the Met Target Gross on the bottom. AYP, Met Target Gross, the answer is no.
I don't see AYP.
On the very bottom, it's in the bottom scale, the bottom chart.
Oh, it says API.
Oh, oh, API, I'm sorry. AYP I don't have on here.
Yeah.
That's in, that's in-
And AYP, it's on this, but it says math and English, so I'm-
That's in Hayden's.
In, in English, first of all, the data is still not finished on, corrected on the webpage completely, so we don't have the final data yet to report to you. My anticipated, trying to calculate how it's going to come out, I don't think they're going to make it in English learners for ELA, for English Language Arts. I think they're going to make it in English learners for math because of data averaging across many years. So you can get average over two years or over three years.
Okay.
So I don't think they're going to make it for the ELA, for English learners, which will mean they have their first mark against them.
Dr. Hayden, you, I'm looking at English or math, 20% proficient and above.
20.9 is what you need, and they had 15.6.
In 03, 04, 28.1, 04, 05, 25.8, 05, 06, and 15.6 in 06, 07.
That's my anticipated score for it, and it's a good drop, yes.
And you're saying that, that there's an averaging rule that will eliminate the impact of that 15.6%?
If you average 28, 25, and 15, it averages above 20.
But the fact is it dropped.
Yes, it did drop.
So that while, while there may be a way of, of averaging and minimizing the effect of that now, the effect of it next year, it would be felt next year presumably.
Yes, and I think that's what Mark mentioned in the very beginning, is that he doesn't like the numbers either. Is that right, Mark?
Oh, that's, yeah. I don't, definitely not like the numbers. No, it's not, it's not well represented.
Go ahead, Ms. Parker.
I just wanted to touch on this professional development plan. This is a great plan to attach. I'm just a little unclear, it says fall 2007, but are you saying that this is actually for fall 2008 that you're planning on using it?
Yeah, I'd like to. I'd like to use it, but I'm just, I'm dating it.
And in the meantime, your late start, Wednesdays, Thursdays?
Wednesdays.
Wednesdays? That gives you an hour?
It gives us an hour. We have, it's about 29 days. There are nine days, roughly nine days for the staff to use on their own, and roughly 20 days where they go to PLCs in one subject matter or another.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Go ahead, Dr. Hall.
Yeah, I want to focus, you've said it already about the data, no sense being that. My thoughts about, about the gestalt, about the broad picture. When I look at it, I say that this school is not in good shape. The data suggests it's not in good shape. In the text, it suggests that there's a major problems, our attendance and discipline. That teacher morale is low, that there's resistance to the professional learning community model, that the teachers are unhappy with the reduction in time at the noon hour, or noon 35 minutes, I guess you would call it, that there are problems with class size in the set I classes. And I, but I go here particularly disheartenedness with this, a genuine disheartenedness with staff that is centered around a feeling that the professional learning community issue, late start day and short lunch was forced on them. Many feel that there was not sufficient information on the scope and nature of the professional learning communities, their function, goals, and objectives. Some staff indicate that they will continue to instruct, quote, "their way," no matter what, no matter what, and many believe that they can get done in a department meeting what they are asked to do in a professional learning community. Lastly, the staff survey and interviews reveal that there is a trust issue with site and district administration. There's a need for healing. When I read that, I don't care about that long list of particulars that you've got, that you're going to do. What's going to happen at that level? Because one thing I've learned in my nine years on the board, that, that a high school is a different beast than a, than an elementary school, and at a high school, it's extremely hard to turn around. And this suggests, I come from university environment, and I, and I see a high school having a great deal more in common with universities. The autonomous, we call it the autonomous professional. And you've got 101 autonomous professionals in your staff, I believe?
At least.
List is 101 on the state website. And it sounds like the autonomous professionals are saying, we don't like what's been going on. And I, and I really, Mr. Turnbull, Mr. Turnbull has to take responsibility for that. You're new, you don't. But you are saddled with the turnaround. And I'd like to hear you talk about that.
The, the greatest portion is, for me, is educating the educators, reeducating the educators. It's a very, it'll be a very slow, slow process, there's no question. It's sort of, the metaphor would be that we're going to have to remodel our house from where we're, where we're living in it, because we have no choice as to the direction we have to go. However, the direction we have to go is probably going to be much slower than anticipated, certainly going to be a challenge. The ability for us to take stock of who we are and sort of rebuild the staff, to take a strong look at the culture and the community that we have, they're good people, and don't anybody kid you, they're very good people. There, there is, you know, there's some anger. I'm sure there's lots of frustration. And part of my job is going to have to promote healing, promote it, it's going to have to be slow to redevelop and build trust within the community. And I think honestly, what Mr. Turnbull did by working with the PLCs was the first step in that I don't think the staff realizes yet, yet. Because if you work in a PLC, if you don't trust, it doesn't work. I mean, that's one of the strongest components of a PLC. And I think it was a great mechanism, a great, for Paul, I think it's wonderful what you did. There's a great start to putting the staff back together because it forces you to work together, it forces you to develop trust, and it does it in a very unique collaborative way. And it also does it in a more spirited and more collegial way. Does that take away from some of the anxiety that the staff feels because, as they say, that was forced upon them? Doesn't take that away. What takes that away is time, and that's what we're up against. There's no question about it. It's not going to be an easy task. But it's time, it's a lot of teaching the educators, and it's a lot of moving because we don't have a choice. We can't do what we did yesterday at this school. We just can't do it.
I, I was looking through, as you were speaking, for another quote in there, and I can't find it, but there was, there were words to the effect that some teachers are saying that they, that they don't, that they're reticent to take responsibility for learning of all students.
Yep.
That's part, that's part of the same problem.
It is part of the same problem, and I can just share quickly that, you know, there's, there's been a culture built in to the community there where some staff never see different levels of kids. And we're trying to communicate in greater detail with the department chairs to ensure that all teachers see all kids, because that's important.
See, I, I pick up on something you said. It is a good staff, and I know a number of teachers there and feel very positive about them. This problem seems to be systemic, culturally systemic, and culture changes, directed culture change is extremely hard, and I wish you all the best.
Thank you.
And can I chime in on this? Because I did mean to say, thank you so much for including that information from the surveying that you've done in this report. I know that Santa Barbara High has been surveyed for two, three years at this point, and I think it's the only comprehensive high school that, in our district, that's been doing that. So Santa Barbara High staff have been able to give this kind of feedback in a way that I don't think I've seen in any of our other schools. So I really appreciate that. Thank you.
In fact, I, I think that's such a good idea, Ms. Parker, that I'd like to see the superintendent and the board president put that on the board's agenda as something we might want to talk about as, as a district-wide policy.
Doc. Okay, Ms. Malacoff.
The Godspeed was the end.
Yeah. I think I'm just going to add to that, is that you've got a lot of challenges ahead, and I'm going to wait till next year to see what, ask questions, but I think you're moving in the right direction, so good luck.
I, I also want to commend you. You know, it involves a certain amount of courage to put a survey in front of a, as a brand-new principal, in front of a staff that you don't know and be willing to, to hear what they have to say, and then to include it in a presentation that's being made at the board level. So thank you for that. I think it's a good start. I also appreciate the fact that in addition to test scores, grades are being tracked for certain segments of students. And we've, we talked in previous presentations about how students don't attach much importance to the CSTs, they do to the exit exam, and I think a lot of students do to grades. And I think tracking their grades is really key. You know, I appreciate you including that, but I also think that the students need the frequent feedback that their grades are in jeopardy. I, you know, it drives me nuts when I talk to students and, you know, you say, you know, how are you doing in your algebra class? And they say, I don't know. It's like, come on, please, don't tell me that. So I think it's really important for students to have that feedback, too. Getting back to your budget, same observation that Ms. Parker made, I realize you're trying to nail down those amounts. There was one big-ish gap, and that had to do with a teacher on special assignment, and I assume they're being paid out of categorical funds, and I assume that it's, you know, a significant amount of money, and it should, it also needs to be reflected in the budget. You've got a significant budget. I mean, it's $611,000. So I don't want to say it's enough money to do what you have to accomplish, it's certainly plenty of money. So is it possible to get the revised budget at a future date? Certainly not in this context, but just for our information. Great. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, you survived your first.
I did.
Now we have San Marcos High School. Mr. Craig Morgan. Go ahead, you can go.
I'll say exactly what you just said. Mr. Morgan, our esteemed colleague from San Marcos High School, and rounding out the pack.
No, go Royals tonight, Dr.
Go Royals.
Good evening. It's nice to know that you've saved the best for the last.
I was, I was thinking it.
I'm going to read from a script. As staff collaboration is embedded within the culture of San Marcos High School, this report is a product of several individuals I would like to thank. Site council coordinator Bob Gray and title one director Jim Ashlock. I'd also like to recognize and thank Dr. Cynthia White for her generous time and vision in the creation of our clear student achievement goals. We currently have 2,103 students, 409 English learners, or 20% of our student body, 104 outstanding dedicated teachers ensure learning takes place every day. Three goals for the year, they're broad. English student achievement focusing on ELD improvement, 10th grade English KC improvement, and CELP improvement. Goal two, math student achievement focusing on algebra, 10th grade KC improvement, and API improvement, instructional improvement in the core areas of 9th through 11th grade students. Data analysis, if you'd like to see the charts I'm going to be discussing, if you turn first to page 41 of our report, and you don't need to do this, but basically what I'm going to go through is site, different data. CST, English Language Arts, all student percent proficient or above. 9th, 10th, and 11th grade respectively are 61, 54, and 52. Graph on page eight, again, you don't have to go through and look at these, but I'm just going to let you have some data. KC, English Language Arts subgroup EL percent, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade are 31, 19, and 23. Graph on page 18, CELP percent proficient improving one grade level, 9th through 12th grade respectively are 68, 69, 73, and 82. Math, algebra achievement, and it'll be obvious to you why we've picked algebra. CST, Algebra I, all students in our entire campus, 9th through 11th grade, these are the percent proficient, 2%, 3%, and 6%. Graph on the top of page 10, KC math subgroup, English Language Learners, percent passed, 10th through 12th grade, 37, 14, and 22%. School-wide goals related to state and federal accountability systems. And before I go on, I've had one of my team members that has just shown up, and I'd like to recognize Jim Ashlock, that has done a great job in preparation of this report. Going back to school-wide goal areas related to federal accountability, AYP goals, it's just like my compatriots have indicated, sophomores in English Language Arts and Math achieving at the 34th percentile. API goals, this is going to be a little bit more specific than my other fellow principals. API goals for this next year, school-wide API will increase 25 points. We will close the achievement gap by 30 points. EL students will gain 35 API points. API results from this past year. API score as of yesterday at 754. The various figures in our plan do not reflect the recent API change, as I just discovered the data yesterday. Our new API of 754 illustrates a 62-point gain over the last five years, with growth last year of 27 points. This past year, all subgroups made growth, closing the achievement gap between white and Latino students by 23 points. Various gains are as follows. Latino, plus 37. White, plus 14. Socioeconomically disadvantaged, plus 45. English learners, plus 40, and that may be a point we may want to talk about later. I- I can't find another school that grew 40 points, and that was as of attending an achievement gap conference and talking to some friends from Whittier. Students with disabilities, plus 62 points. Algebra continues to lag behind all other math department tests, and therefore is a key focus area of improvement for all students, but especially our EL and special ed kids. School profile highlights. Celebrated collaborative culture recognized as a distinguished school in 2005. And that, the significance of that was that's what the state told us, they'd never seen another school with such collaboration. 21 students recognized as national merit semifinalists, commended students, or nationally-recognized Hispanic students from last year's PSAT. And we tested 350 kids on the PSAT, up another 50 from last year in the last month. New bell schedule, with late start Thursdays for PLC development, Edgesoft training, best teaching practices, Avid methodology and training. ELAC program growing with recent recognition of 41 Latino students with a 3.5 GPA or higher, and 22 additional Latino students with a GPA of between 3.5 and 3.0. New Latino anger management groups. New Royal University Parents Support Group. New Mesa Chapter. When we redid our front office with ADA compliance, we reorganized how our office was structured, and we reconfigured that to better welcome specifically Latino parents, and increased the number of bilingual office support staff available for parent translation support in the front office. Ongoing student incentive program, and I hope we can talk about that, not during my 12 minutes, but maybe on yours. Avid continues to grow and thrive because of Vicki Haynes, great growth, and having been there a long time. Ongoing character education, this year led by Rachel's Challenge monthly meetings. Link Crew Program coming in January, we're really excited about where they can tie that in with some site runs and Renaissance. Homework Club using Avid-trained tutors to help students in need of assistance in algebra after school, more detail on that coming. Pyramid of interventions being further developed for full implementation in the fall, and a closed campus with fair but firm sequential discipline process in place. This year, we don't use, we don't allow iPods on campus. School community strengths. ELAC meetings aligned to site council meetings. 50 to 60 parents have shown for each of our first two meetings due to increased outreach and Teresa Lewis, our community liaison's, great work. Potential barriers for growth of progress. Student attendance needs to be an issue. We improved it 2% last year. It's not enough. Suspension rate decreased by 49% last year due to some coding issues and various support programs being used more effectively by our assistant principals. Expulsion rate reduced, expulsions by 19%. Another issue that Mark addressed earlier from DP was the new contract with the 31 cap. That is an issue that I hope I'd like to address later. Again, going back to our three focus areas, our SMART goals and ELD. All ELD students taking the KC for the first time in English and math will reach 34%. I go into some 48.7 of our EL students advanced to proficient level this school year on the CELT, and another goal of 19.8 of our EL students attaining English proficiency on the CELT. In algebra, we will raise the percentage of Algebra I students attaining proficiency level from 2% to 12% in CST. A minimum of 34% of our students and 34% of each subgroup taking the KC as sophomores will attain proficiency in the math. API, I've already reviewed some of those at 25. We want to increase our API by 25 points, 30 points between our, in our achievement gap, and have our EL students gain another 35 points. Now, to the meat of the presentation. Going back through our three goals, and I'm going to tell you specifically what we're doing to address these. EL student achievement. We're going to create a site literacy EL task force. Even though our EL score is a plus 40 points of improvement equal to some of the top high schools in the state of California, our EL program continues to need work focusing on site literacy for EL kids, looking at how we allocate our funding, and continuing to best practice research visiting some other sites, specifically Whittier, Whittier High School, where some friends of mine are now administrators. English, ELD, and High Point PLCs are in progress. Norm goals and common assessments are being developed. Staff is being trained or in the process of being trained with Edgesoft. English department is using Holt exams for common data Edgesoft analysis. New software program that Cynthia suggested that's getting off the ground, Cynthia, and it's really working well so far is Let's Go Learn, used at La Cumbra, is being piloted in ELD classes. Not only that, in algebra, but that was a voluntary situation by one of our teachers in ELD. Coordinator of that is Ruben Roscoe, our computer technology technician that has gone to La Cumbra, has been trained, and is now being a trainer of trainers. Non-core PLCs focused on reading and writing, we're in the process of getting those teachers trained in writing strategies. All ELD students have double periods, High Point and ELD. All students who have not passed the KC English test are assigned the additional English KC classes. Something new last year that we felt was a pivotal situation in the growth was Mary Lindenstein created and implemented an English 9 Transition and an English 10 Basic Skills course that focuses on language standards, sample essays, and pre-writing strategies among other things. An increased monitoring of student achievement, ensuring proper student placement, and the support, Homework Club, after-school tutoring, Avid Coordinator Vicki Haynes. That's English. Under Algebra I, KC math goals, various PLCs within our math department are in progress, norms, goals, and common assessments. Staff's being trained to Edgesoft. We will use district-created Algebra I assessment and Let's Go Learn program to assess and reteach students. Jim behind me was the first algebra teacher in this district to utilize and utilize Edgesoft for development and ongoing assessment of algebra kids. I was really proud of Jim doing that, taking the lead. Homework Club targeted Algebra I students not completing homework. Probably ought to pause, I'm going to go over my 12 minutes, but I want, this is interesting. I took this idea from Paul. At other schools, kids when they're tutored in, in, in algebra are taken out, tutored, or tutored within the program, and they miss the instructional content. What we've done is we've got a math coach that we've hired that teaches KC strategies to our EL kids in ELD program, working on word analysis problems along with math instruction, and in our special ed II classes along with their math content. So, a little bit different twist on what's been done in the past. KC math coach, hired a coach, I just went through that. API improvement, ongoing development of student incentive program, created a significant paradigm shift, demonstrated to our students and parents the clear need for students to improve their grades, take star tests more seriously, and as a result, provided the school more accurate assessment data to improve instruction. Students are aware of their scores and the need to improve their learning. Every day, students test, the student testing opt-outs have declined almost zero. Another second, today I met with 40 National Honor Society students that thought they had qualified as our incentives last year for our principal letter of recommendation to follow them into college. These are all 11th graders. Of the 40, only 15 kids had achieved proficiency or higher on all their CSTs. That's kind of a little, we've talked about grade inflation and how we're not taking the test seriously, should have seen their faces as they're eating the pizza I bought for them, and they're not going to get the principal letter, which I didn't think was a big deal that it is to them, to get into college and have that for applications next year. Professional development plan. Teacher-driven staff development, co-chaired by State Teacher of the Year Eric Burrows, focuses on San Marcos High School community and best teaching practice. New late bell schedule for PLC, best teaching practices, Avid methodology, and staff department meetings. Staff Development Committee has developed a calendar for the entire year and a process to change that calendar as time may need. Focusing on PLC goals, PLC groups, I'm not going to go with the rest of that. School leadership, I'm almost done. San Marcos High School leadership can best be illustrated by institutionalized change processes that have taken place over the last five years. PLC team leaders and sub-leaders have been trained or are being developed through various forms of mentoring, including staff development activities. Excuse me. Core PLC teams focus on their specific area of instruction, while non-core areas focus on reading and writing within a specific area fostering a culture of high levels of learning for all students. Site PLCs have been linked to administrator areas for teacher evaluation, observations, to monitor student progress and the actual instruction that takes place within those different PLC areas. So, in other words, if I'm going to go evaluate one of you, and I am in charge of the English department, I'm going to only go see English teachers teach in their class, therefore ensuring rigorous instructions taking place. Several teachers on special assignment have volunteered to serve in various administrative leadership positions, gaining experience in building school leadership capacity. Last year, because of two of our great assistant principals being out for maternity leave, we had nine different assistant principals serving in those two positions, and the school still flourished, I'm very proud of that. Evidence of current leadership can be illustrated by an October 2007 Principal Leadership Survey from McCrell's 21 Research-Based Leadership Responsibilities. Four areas were related to student achievement, curriculum instruction, and instructional resources, which earned a 4.4 out of a possible 5 on that scale. San Marcos faculty rated current principal leadership an overall score of a 4.69 out of a possible 5.0, entalling most common responses of the 21 leadership areas. Professional learning communities. We are in the implementation stage of the development of professional learning communities, monitoring student learnings. Our four core PLCs, as well as our non-core groups, are in different various stages of implementation. Due to our celebrated collaboration, our Staff Development Committee has the responsibility for planning and implementing all staff development, including addressing the needs of student achievement when students are not meeting learning expectations, organizing teacher observation, and sharing best practice teaching methodologies. One example is English teacher Desa Mandarina, who recently shared her published work with our staff. And I brought a copy, I brought a copy of this for all of our staff, I was so impressed with it, this, if you'd help me. So, take a look at that. And all it is, is her best teaching strategies that she has learned, she's a great, one of the greatest English teachers I've ever met. And then she took 20, 30 minutes of our staff development time in August with a panel, Eric Burrows was there as well, and shared some of her practices, so you can take a look with that. With that, that completes my presentation. Our celebration, because we have not celebrated yet, our achievement gains will begin on Monday when we get back. We're going to celebrate for three weeks. We're going to go to Christmas Vacation, come back and work hard and get ready to test. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Morgan. See, you never give a handout until after the questions, because everybody's looking through the, I'm teasing you. Go ahead, Ms. Malcock.
We've been talking, the other chief principals, about how students aren't taking the test seriously, and you've got an approach here, incentives. Could you talk about those?
Yes, you know, 35 years doing this in secondary education, and I don't want to leave, because I finally found the magical, and I really, really believe it. You can walk around campus and hear kids talk about, "Well, I didn't score proficiency, I'm not getting off campus for lunch. I'm not getting dismissed anymore, I'm going to study hall, I'm not being allowed to park in a parking lot." That may have been an issue this year. We discovered it through best practice research. A year ago, we visited Foothill Technical High School, whose API is now 900. It's the top public high school in the state, has to be in the top 10 in the nation. We took their ideas, we took students, staff, and parents to that meeting. We went to lunch together down in Ventura. We took that all last year and met with our House of Representatives kids and developed our incentives. Before the testing ever took place, so our kids and my administration went around to every class and talked to the kids about that. So, when the kids took the STAR test last year, they knew what was going to happen, they had a copy of their test before, and they know if they didn't score proficient or higher, they would not earn certain rights. We put it in place this fall. It was eye-opening for some of our kids. The offshoot that I didn't expect was to have kids talk, talking to kids about, "Well, I scored below proficient, I didn't make it. I have a 4.2, Mr. Morgan, get my scores." Well, I took, I did, you're going to go back and help us with this? No, we're not going to help you with it. So, that was, that's the paradigm shift that was critical, came out of DeFoe, Adley Stevenson High School. DeFoe was one of the ones that helped them develop PLCs, and this is one of those things, it's along with the Pyramid of Interventions, as I continue to do research and find different ways. And this came out of Scottsdale, Arizona, five years ago, and I would start to take a different group of teams there, affect at schools' conferences, and it's all kind of, it's a long sequence, but as long as you continue to keep, continue doing educational research and taking your team with you, then it's not the principal's idea. Principal doesn't do anything, he's the hood ornament on the car, because the rest of it's all being done for you. So, thank you for asking the questions.
Is it, it seems like it would be an administrative, quite a job. I mean, you have to figure out who is getting to go off campus? No, it's been okay, that, doing that has been fine?
I reorganized, one of our administrator's strengths was data analysis. Roxanna Stern does a great job, and I took attendance away from her, gave it to another individual, and she does all the data analysis. As a matter of fact, in two days during preregistration, we were able to give some of our top kids a priority registration. The time we got the test results from Davis, she was able to take that data, turn it around, and two days later, when registration started, one of the incentives was our very top kids could come in and pick their classes, what period, and so on and so forth. We turned it over in 48 hours. I didn't think we could do it, but because of Edgesoft and Aries and Davis's wisdom, we were able to make the program work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I want to interject a question on this one, too. From a, from a demographic standpoint, it seems like white, middle-class students would reap the benefits of these rewards. Has that been true?
No, because there was school rewards. What I'll announce on Monday is, there was school rewards, and there was individual rewards, and that we tried to create them without that, that issue being an issue. One of the top goals this year was to attain an API of 755. We, we're 754, I'm going to let it go. If, and what the kids said they wanted was they, they wanted to have a school-wide carnival and have an extended lunch. It blew me away, I thought they'd want to go to Disneyland or something, and we put the money aside from site council, that's, so that now the seniors, juniors, and sophomores will qualify for that. It's going to be the week before our testing comes in. It hasn't been an issue. It hasn't been an issue, because we, when the kids and I created it, the kids had to have one mark of proficiency in one of their tests to get off campus, and they became immediately aware of what their test scores were.
Go ahead, Ms. Cordiar.
Well, and I didn't mean to go ad- and I was just going to ask you a quick question about this one, too. Because I have the same concern that Ms. Harder raised, and I'm not entirely convinced by your response that that's not exactly happening, but even more specifically, or in looking at the list of incentives, most of them are, you know, the things that are just sort of nice extras for kids to have. You know, being, the off-campus incentive, the dismissal incentive, et cetera. The one concern I have is priority registration incentive, because that seems like something that all students, I mean, that could potentially affect other students' academic progress as well, if they're not having access to all the classes. So, that one, I question whether that is an appropriate incentive in the, in terms of how it might impact other students.
Yeah, what I should have done, and meant to do, and didn't do, was to bring the actual sheet, and I'll email that to all of you next week, so you can actually see what was handed out, included in our PTSA. And I don't want to go on TV and tell our kids that it was a sham, but it wasn't a sham. But our kids that needed four classes, eight classes all year, with the extra money that we utilized to buy down class sizes, those kids get everything they need more through the categorical programs that you see. We struggled with our top AP scholars trying to create an incentive for them, and this was the priority registration. They came back and told us that would really be the carrot, yet there was incentives through the entire area that were for all kids. So, it didn't become an issue because of the embedded categorical funds and the other part of our regular funds that come to us for the creation of our entire school.
Were you done, Ms. Malcock?
That's fine.
Okay, Dr. Al.
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Morgan. I propose this conversation, my colleague, Mrs. Parker, sent me an email once, many months ago, about a school in Orange County that had an incentive system. Money. Money. They tied monetary rewards to school performance, and they were getting performance. I remember, we joked about it, where are we going to find the money and so on. I have, I have felt, and I've just, I've been aware a little bit of the incentive idea that you had. I think it's ingenious, and the special kind of genius that it's so commonsensical. People respond to rewards. So if you want to modify behavior, you don't do it through punishment or a threatened punishment. You do it by rewards. Maybe your list isn't, needs some tweaking.
Absolutely.
You know, I leave that to you and your colleagues, but I'll be, this is one of the reasons I have been interested, an academic reason, in, for enclosing Santa Barbara High School, because that's a very strong piece of an incentive system, being able to get off campus. There are safety reasons as well. So I think it's, I think it's a great idea, and I think, I think that, that the idea of finding all, find the list of perks that you can possibly manipulate and hold them out there as a way to encourage kids and give them that extra reward. I think it's a great idea, and the results, the people who benefit most from it are going to be the ones who don't seem to respond to the implicit incentives that are in the unexamined system. I wanted to comment on that. I like this idea of a transition from eighth to ninth grade with La Cumbre. And could you explain a little more about that?
Well, we, we were going to fund that with some carryover cash, and I don't believe we're going to get that. As of right now, we don't have the carryover. That was the lowest thing on the priority, Dr. Noel. What I wanted to do was to develop a program in the summertime for the students at La Cumbre that didn't go through the graduation ceremony. Work with Joanne, her counselors and staff, to house it at her site or mine, to take the idea that Cynthia created at Santa Barbara High School, becoming a done, not have it be the entire summer session, but have it be some life skills, use the link crew, have some older kids come in, link up student support, teach some basic skills and study skills. That's the, that's kind of the idea at this point.
How much do you need for that?
Well, we had $10,000 set aside for it.
That would be eligible for Title I money, but you've got it all.
Yes, but again, we've spent it all, haven't we?
Maybe Mr. Turnbull can find some money floating around the district. That's, it's a good idea, but it's especially because the research is so clear about the loss in performance that happens at those discontinuities, as you move from eighth grade to ninth grade, or from sixth grade to seventh grade, or fifth to sixth in a middle school system. So I just think it's very important that that be addressed, and I hope that you can restore that program.
Before we leave, Dr., I want to interrupt you just for a second. Before we leave the incentives, and I want this as critical, the incentives are a leading, living, breathing document that are in an ongoing process of being redeveloped as we talk by our kids. And the process goes from the House of Representative Students, second period, to our ASB that mushes it over, to our PAC, our department chairs, to admin, to PTSA, back to the House of Reps. So I mean, it's a, it's a really, it really becomes powerful, because many different stakeholders are obtaining information to it. So when you get my email, you will see things on there that may not look anything like what they look like this year, because some of it didn't work. Some of it did favor some high-achieving kids in a parking lot issue, as opposed to special ed kids. Well, we modified that the first day of school, and by the sixth week of school, that was put in place. It's not a perfect system. It absolutely is not. It needs to continue to be revolutionized and looked at. It's a big paradigm shift.
Well, that was going to be a question I had, because I would be interested in knowing how, how many non-English-speaking students are represented in the student government organizations that look at and help develop the incentives, and whether those bodies actually are reflective of the overall demographics of the student body.
I can answer that now, if you'd like me to. I would say that our ASB does not reflect our percent in our campus. I can say our House of Representatives absolutely does, and that's where the substance of the creation of this comes from. Our House kids, second-period representatives, are the ones that actually come up with the ideas and make the recommendations to the ASB. And generally, the ASB just...
And there are non-English-speaking students in that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Because it's a representative from every second-period class. That's, we just, that would be a fair, equitable way to do it. And then, last year, we didn't require them to go back and bring back an idea. We just talked, this year, they've got homework to do, and they're required to come back and bring ideas that we talk about in ASB, and then it goes back out. So there's a whole different communication that's taking place this year. In our second year, we're refining the situation.
That's great. Thanks.
I'm sorry, Dr.
I wanted to ask about, you talk about the reduction, the increase in attendance?
Yes.
2%?
Yes.
19% decline in expulsions?
Yes.
49% decrease in suspensions?
Yes.
How, how do you make that happen?
Well...
Let me tell you the problem. One way, a high suspension number can mean that a lot of kids deserves to have been suspended and got suspended, and were detected. Okay? A reduction in the number could mean that, simply that we're not detecting them, we're not reporting them. And just wanted to have you kind of sort through that for me.
Let's start with suspension, then I'll go to attendance. We, a year ago, two years ago, we were coding and had a process in place for kids that were attending Saturday detention that didn't attend. They were being coded for at-home suspension rather than in air. That accounts for the decrease primarily. I would say that accounts for 60% of the decrease this past year. I would say that 33, or a third of that percent, comes about by assistant principals using other avenues of support for kids and actually making exerted effort. We had campus activities, new campus activities with competitions between classes last year. We're doing it again this year. And each month, the class that had the best suspension rate and attendance rate got additional points, and it was celebrated, as silly as that can be, along with the other silly games of class competition. Expulsions, I really can't say, other than, than we really work hard at being present. I require every one of my administrators, including myself, as other high schools do, and campus supervisors to be out before the bell rings for every passing grade, and we only have three, as well as before-school and after-school, and I lead the way with that. I don't know what other schools do. I can only say that, that we are very active in making sure that we have a safe campus. That goes back to my second year when we closed the campus. It was a...
And you say you've identified discipline also as something to improve.
Absolutely.
Can you talk about that?
Well, I'm never happy suspending or expelling a kid. Ever.
What is the kind of the tone? I mean, I had a kid at your campus, everybody knows that, but, but, you know, he hung out with the musicians, and so we had a little narrow window on the campus. What is the overall tone, discipline-wise? Is it, on a scale of permissive to compulsive, where is San Marcos?
Right now, it's, it's very, I don't know how to answer your question. Please visit.
Well, I heard, I, I'm troubled, because I was talking to a teacher not too long ago, a female, I'll leave the school's name out, who said that it was not uncommon for males in her class to call her bitch, and that she didn't feel that she could do much about it. She was afraid, didn't feel that there was the support. And I just find that so reprehensible. And I, that's, my question was not that strong, but my question is about the environment in which...
We, because of my background, I want to run a tight ship. I hold my administrators and students accountable. When we voted to take away iPods from our kids this year, and the staff brought it up, and we supported it, we got an ovation from our staff in August when we made that decision that they brought up. As far as our discipline spectrum, to be able to address iPods, that's how far we've come. Our kids are very happy where they are. They feel safe where they are. We have issues like any other high school. We, I know personally every trouble, perhaps gang-involved student on that campus by first name. They're my kids. That's the owner, and I, but I've always done that. I mean, it's just, it comes naturally. I spent a half hour with one today. I don't know how to answer your question. I'm very, very satisfied with where this campus is. It's the safest campus I've been on in the last, maybe 20 years right now. Now, that's not to say Monday I couldn't have an issue, but that's how comfortable I am right now with where we are. And I think Rachel's challenge had a lot to do with that, Dr. Noel. I think our, our whole year last year working on character ed has had an input and impact on that. And, you know, I hold our administrators responsible for being out on campus.
Dr. Noel, you just shared some information that I think I needed to hear, and I don't think there's a person in the room who would think that that's acceptable. So, so if you get information like that, ever, please talk to me immediately.
Well, the identity of the person is something I don't want even to get close to that.
Well, you don't have, you don't have to identify the person, but that's not acceptable on any campus, and there are things that can be done on every campus, so. So we could get that information back to that person through you or through any other avenue. I mean, we just can't allow that to go on.
Thank you.
Ms. Parker?
Hello. Thank you, for talking about the incentives. Of course, that was one of my big questions. I also wanted to ask you about English language development students. On page 16 of 53, when you're talking about improvement of instruction of instructional strategies and materials, A, to have counselors schedule ELD students into two ELD classes, High Point and ELD simultaneously all year long.
Yes.
Now, High Point is an intervention program for English language development. So if you have them in an ELD class, then essentially another ELD class, when in their schedule do they have time for their core English language arts class?
That is the beauty of San Marcos High School. Eight classes a day available, using the categorical funds that we talked about, that eventually they can cover everything. One of the things that we're going to do in our EL task force, and I don't know that it's going to be possible, but I talked to our EL department chair, a wonderful new counselor we've hired, Maria Cabrera, to link those two curriculums somehow, so that it's a seamless flow and not two, two areas.
Right.
That's the goal for the next six months, for next fall.
Can I just piggyback? I had the exact same thing marked. Are they giving up two full blocks over the course of an entire year?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Because my concern with that would be, does, how does that impact their ability to take the other A through G requirements?
I'm so glad you brought that up.
So are they take, those students must be scheduled for four blocks the entire school year?
Yes, there's flexibility in that, but generally, our ELD1, our lowest kids, are in those two double-block periods all year.
Okay.
And it, and I can't say specifically at what point they come out of this. A lot has to do with the self-testing, but it was a real struggle for me, decision-wise, not to drop our ELD program. And that's, Cynthia is going to be helping me with the task force, so thank you for volunteering to do that. We met a couple of weeks ago. So that's, we've got our plate full in addressing our ELD issues. The beauty of the block is we've got the extra periods, along with the categorical support, to do that.
So they do have time to take the math, lab science?
Yeah, there is. 16 opportunities, subtracting eight leaves eight other blocks. Okay, Ms. Cordial.
Oh, actually, no. I have one more question. Sorry, so sorry.
Not alone, sorry.
Jump in. This is really... Just real quick, at the very end, when you're talking about AVID, the AVID program support, you have a funding source, AVID?
We use some of our money out of our SIP for that. We get some from the district. Paul's real generous with that. We use our staff development funds for sending the teachers to conferences. I talked to Vicki just today, as we make plans for how we're going to send and pay for a large team to go next year. And I'll be talking to Paul, because I know there's a portion of an AVID training taking place in Santa Barbara, and that may be able to save some money.
So this section that you, that is called Funding Source AVID, that's like district AVID money that's...
It's our site money.
It's your site money that you just...
It's our site money, yes. And it's basically field trips, supplies, and so forth.
Gotcha. Okay, thanks.
I was under the impression I had already asked all my questions. I completely, I was thinking I had already gone. I just, I had one very, I did ask most of my questions. I had one very similar question in, where you're talking about KC Prep, and it identifies that students who fail to progress to the second term of Algebra I will be reassigned to a KC Prep class, utilizing direct instruction, purchased KC computer programs, et cetera. And there's no funding source. And I was wondering, is that because this is already going on, and it's just basically maintaining it? It seemed to me, as I was reading this, it sounded like it was going to be an expansion. There would be more students going into this program.
We get funds from the district for that.
Okay, so those are just regular, general funds?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
I'm not sure if they're general. I believe the district gets additional...
No, I don't mean general. I mean, just general funds.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes.
Unrestrictive funds.
I can, yeah, let me jump in there. If we're talking about KC remedial classes, then KC remedial classes are supplementary instruction dollars that come from the state. They're reimbursed. So essentially, the district pays upfront for the staffing costs. We submit hourly timesheets with rosters, et cetera, and the state reimburses us. The kids in those classes either have to be at risk of not passing the class, so they're generally freshmen and sophomores. Inside the regular day, if they're non-passers, that's KC intensive instruction money, same hourly program, supplementary from the state.
Okay. Thank you.
Actually, I want to go back to a comment that, that Dr. Caprino made, and it was about staff not seeing different levels of students. Has nothing to do with the presentation you just made, but it has been policy in the district to spread out that kind of load, so that a teacher isn't seeing all gate and AP students over the course of their day. And it was actually something that, that Mr. Turnbull and I had a conversation about, you know, following up on campuses and seeing how those classes are distributed, because it shouldn't occur, although I'm sure that it occasionally does. But I think as a district, it's something that we need to monitor. Yeah, anyway, okay. Your gate participation, you have the highest Latino gate participation of any high school campus, and, I mean, obviously, it's not a place to stop. It should be higher, but, you know, I want to compliment you on that.
Thanks.
And I, I think that Ms. Haynes has a lot to do with that.
The other thing, if you think back, about three years ago, I think, we started Dan Archuleta. We got the idea through best practice research to develop a AP Spanish gateway, and it's been three, three years, I think, now that that's been, and thank you for recognizing that, but I think that's a cornerstone piece for us, as far as, it's not, but it's not nearly what we need to do.
Yeah, yeah. No, I would agree with that.
But thank you for recognizing that.
And then just one more sort of all-high school generic comment, and that is the, all three of the high schools are trying to focus on algebra... All three of the high schools are trying to focus on algebra skills for the students, their students who are struggling. And about five or six years ago, we as a district made a cold turkey shift to move algebra from as a ninth-grade curriculum to an eighth-grade curriculum. And I guess I just have to reflect at this point, if we're not feeling the impact now and what's happening in our elementary schools and our junior highs, that you are getting ninth graders who can't deal with, you know, algebra kinds of problems. And I see Mr. Ashlock, Go Bears, sitting in the back, nodding his head. I think that it's something that's not a high school issue. It's an all-district issue. It's a feeder-district issue, and I would like to try and find a way to address it so that it's not dumped on high school principals with their newest cohort of ninth-grade students.
I think that's worth an examination. In fact, for a number of years, the data was showing that more and more students were taking algebra at the eighth-grade level and some even at seventh-grade levels. So we had all of our most capable math students already satisfying the algebra requirements. And who goes to high school to take algebra and what course do they next need to take? That's algebra. And you're getting the least-prepared students then moving into those classes.
Well, and as Dr. Noel has pointed out in the past, if you're not taking and passing algebra as a ninth grader, you will probably never be on track to fulfill A through G requirements for the Cal States and the UCs. You don't need to take geometry as a ninth grader in order to accomplish that. Many, many, you know, great students are able to do that, starting with algebra in ninth grade, but you've got to be able to pass algebra in ninth grade.
And the performance levels in the high school as a result are very, very low because the ones who are the higher levels already took it at junior high school.
Right, you've done it.
Yeah, it's something like seventy-three percent below proficient.
Right. But it's not a ninth grade... It should not be a high school issue.
Well, I'm wondering if all it's telling us is that we have skewed data. I mean, it may be that it's the exact same kids that ten years ago also would not have been proficient in algebra, only now all of our attention's on them because everybody else has taken it in junior high. So it's kind of like we just don't know. And maybe it's good for them because they're twenty-to-one in ninth grade for algebra, and that I see is at least a positive because they need the smaller class size if they've gotten to that point and still haven't taken it.
So we'll end on the glass half-full.
Yeah.
Can I make a generic observation when you're finished?
I'm done. Go ahead.
One thing that... We didn't talk about A to Gs very much here, but I may interest you to know, in my explorations, I found one district that has made the A to Gs a high school graduation requirement, district-wide, and it's a district of over seventy percent Latinos.
It's... If I can add, my friend that's the Assistant Super Instruction, Whittier, witnessed his presentation last week. Board goal was to increase the percent of students being accepted into four-year colleges by two percent each year and to increase the A to G requirements of graduates by two percent each year. So I came back and did research, and San Marcos last year was at thirty-four percent. Of last year's graduating class had completed their A to G requirements, according to Roxanna's data, so I was very pleased with that data. Just wanted to share.
Well, this district... It's San Ana, district-wide. Blew me away. I learned it when I went down there. My next question was, and what happened to your dropout rate? And one teacher said, "I think we're gonna take a hit." But one school looks like it has not taken that hit. And then it seemed to me then that the... I couldn't find anybody to talk to at length about it, and why I think it may be relevant discussion for us, that the rationale for it probably has to do... It's very long-term. It probably has to do with expectations and image and the school culture, where it just becomes... It permeates the awareness of kids who just don't think that way because now it's equated with getting out of school. The other thing I learned is that they... You can get a D grade in an A to G course and graduate from high school. That's the way they avoid disaster. Oh, well, that sounds kind of phony, but no. If you're talking about culture change, it's a start, and it's a very interesting thing. I found one place, one school district in the state.
Well, something... I saw Mr. Turnbull making notes. Maybe that's a discussion that we have when we get to our board focus goal setting. Okay, we need to take action. Would someone like...
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the single plans?
I'm going to approve the single plans for the Santa Barbara High School, Los Pueblos High School, San Marcos High School, and La Cuesta.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So the plans are approved five-zero, and that brings us to this meeting being adjourned. Thank you all very much.